Good evening, all this Fairfield Plan and Zoning Commission Special Meeting April 30th. Order. Our only item is our P O C D update. Open commission discussion. Thought is just to kind of go through what we were doing last time, kind of go through what the edits are. And we can circle back to areas that need to be especially recommendations that we need to come to. Let's just say a non-binding consensus, at the very least, to see where, what we want to put forth as an initial, well, I won't say as a draft for public meetings. So if there's a chance, if there's an item, probably a resolution that we have, for example, expanding D C D westward. We've been talking about that, we have recommendations, we were talking about it. We should probably revisit that to see what the consensus is of the commission. Again, not binding on us to accept, but at least to at least get an idea of the current consensus so we can put something forward for public hearings. And after public hearing debate, more or less, and then, you know, vote whenever we're back. So that, yes, Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. The latest iterations of changes or edits that we sent to you the past week, I sent some today, I think Jeff did too. How will that go into this document?
Well, I think as we march through the chapters, if there's a piece that is relevant, then we'll hold that in. And if we don't, if we get through and haven't addressed anything that's on your list, then we can certainly talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair. Let's keep going where we have been.
We can circle back to the extent we.
Yeah, we talked about some major issues last time, let's keep going. Except that you have comments, bring them up. I mean, again, we should have some, you know, to be a board, a commission consensus about whatever the edits and comments are, even current draft, what it says. So, and if we haven't touched on things, the next step is to go back and talk about them and get a consensus on them. But again, you know, focus on the recommendations, I think, so we can, or public hearing. Should we have other issues with the rest of the body? I mean, so we can address them, but I think the recommendations are prime.
Is there a last night then of having a working session?
I think so.
How many more years do we have?
So, let's see, see how far we get.
Still waiting for input from Conservation and Harbor Management.
We can, we can.
Okay.
Walk through some of that.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think we got through the housing chapter. So we were looking, I think we were at page 23, beginning of the sustainably prosperous community. I just wanted, before we turn over demo, I just want to point out a couple of things. This, in our, in this opening draft, or excuse me, this, this is where the statement that we pulled out of the summary talks about understanding. It talks about Gordon's grand list, Ian, which is a strategy, one of the biggest goals that came out of the economic, or the strategic plan. That it's recognized here that that's going to happen through adaptive reuse and redevelopment, not on mass rezoning. The other thing I want to say is there are some overlapping strategies here from the housing chapter that we discussed last week. And because there are certain housing strategies that are in fact also economic development strategies. So there's a bit of overlap in some of these recommendations. So like I said, that, we will go through what we've, have been modified since the last draft.
I have one question about the headings. So all of the headings are more, they're just not descriptive to me, like a sustain. I thought when I saw sustainably, that that was the sustainability section, but it really is not about sustainability, it's about economics, I guess. I just think some of these headings need to change. They don't, they're not descriptive to me. I was looking at the Westport P O C D and they have three broad simple areas. One is called conservation-related, development-related, infrastructure-related, and everything else is within that. And they kind of explain this tiny bit of overlap, but not much, really. It's very confusing, I don't know what some of these things mean, honestly. And also I feel like there could be legal impact on some of them. Home to All, I don't know what that means, but I do know that when people come in, they cite provisions in this as support for, you know, for development applications. And I'm not saying this is enforceable, but it doesn't look good if you go against something that's stated in your own P O C D, you know. So I think implying anything is kind of a mandate or something that we need to do is a problem. It should just be broad categories, that's my belief, stylistic, but.
Well, I will say that we did have a, an outline and a table of contents and structure discussion back over a year ago in terms of how we thought we would, you know, and these were the titles and the themes that came out of that. So community home for all is essentially, you know, housing chapter, sustainably prosperous communities, essentially.
It's called housing.
You could, sure. But again, I don't agree that the title of any particular chapter is binding on you in any way.
It shows our intent. And I don't think we should lay any more mandates on us that are already there.
I'm not sure what's, what's the mandate, though?
To make it a broad.
I don't know what it means.
Description as not to be nailed to like some specific wording in the thing, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, but I'm struggling to find what this, this community that is home for all is a broad statement. So what, what is?
I would rather see something like encouraging a diversity of housing, or, you know, something like that.
I mean, maybe, but I mean, that falls to the exact same thing.
That's, it's, I think that's.
Well, what if we, time of the point is, what if we don't live up to that expectation as a home for all? I mean, surely.
I don't know what that.
Fairfield isn't.
Well, I mean, I just, I just heard that alternative being a diverse community and that's, that falls to the same thing, so.
I didn't say I agree with her.
No, but I mean.
Well, I think you have to take it all in its totality, rather than parsing out the title of the chapter. If you, if you take the narrative, descriptive narrative that kind of describes, leads up to the ultimate recommendations as a whole. No, I don't think, you know, we're anticipating that everybody in the United States live in Fairfield, or however you take that. It's, 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 these are kind of aspirational titles, that's all.
I mean, great fluff, to be honest with you, they're fluff titles.
They're very fluff.
Which is fine, though, that's not something I had not seen before.
We're not going to get sued for this.
There's something on page 27 that says regulatory barrier. I don't think we should say we're putting barriers out there for people to do things. We have zoning code that we've always followed. I don't call that a barrier, I call it a code in the best interest of our town. Maybe we should change it, maybe we shouldn't, but I don't like to call it a barrier, it's very negative connotation.
Well, again, we'll get to that in a couple pages, but the idea there is that we are, this plan is articulating some strategies and goals to increase certain, or for certain development opportunities. And if there's a barrier that's in our existing regulations that prevents that occurring, that's what that title.
I don't think we have to use negative words, we could say, we'd like to expand something, let's consider something.
So, so I think, I think for this title, one of the reasons why we got here was because in terms of sustainable Fairfield, one of the things that we, that they have been talking about and trying to advance is a more walkable environment. And that ties in directly to the T O D strategies that have been part of the T O D plan that we, that we, that we did back in 2018, 2019. So it speaks to the economic development opportunities that also make this a walkable community for those who want that choice. So it does speak to improving the roadway infrastructure, but tying that into the T O D plan that was done, as well as introducing more multifamily housing opportunities, but in conjunction with making our commercial corridors more sustainable. Because what we've seen, and we took, you know, we took a meeting with one of our commercial property owners in Fairfield who said, I just can't make ground floor commercial work anymore, I need to do something that's mixed use. So this is kind of embracing that whole strategy of looking forward to diversifying our commercial corridor in a, you know, in a, in a mixed use way. And that being the adaptive reuse, the infill strategy, where we're not expanding our commercial areas, but we're repurposing those in ways in which we understand is more sustainable for those property owners and for Fairfield moving forward.
I just find the headings confusing and it's just.
I think the content is more important than the headings, so I hear what you're saying. I do have a question, and I don't want to go down rabbit hole.
Yeah, Commissioner Randolph out of there.
So, so I think the guidance we've been giving, given is that the blue pages have the substance of this document, correct?
Well, they have the recommend.
Well, the both, the blue pages are the recommended strategies and the narrative before that kind of is the discussion points behind that. It's important for us to get to the blue pages, so if, Commissioner Braun, I understand there's, you're concerned with some of the ambiguity of these headers. Perhaps you could come back with written, physically written response to clarify some of those issues.
I would love to redline the whole thing.
Well, that's the whole.
I hope I shouldn't do that.
I mean, you, we've been both, we've been providing written responses, but if you could provide written responses to the headers, you see, see them as being ambiguous or problematic, that would probably be the most efficient way to get to the blue pages, if you will.
I mean, we've been, I've always been asking, if you have red lines, that's fine. I mean, at the same time, I want to, we're trying to do this as orderly as we can. And the idea being, you know, 40,000 foot view, 20,000, you know, looking at the recommendations being paramount to kind of at this point. So I mean, we, I understand you and Commissioner Harrison and others have said they want to go a little more detailed. It's fine and fair. So, I mean, we, I think the idea that Commissioner Randolph had suggested of, you know, get ideas as to what you're looking for with these headers, that's fine. But I agree with Commissioner Harrison, that substance should obviously be more important than I think the headers, which I don't think we're going to be held to, but Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, I think that's right, and I also think sometimes it's easier to headline things after the final product and stuff, but that's me. But I had a question, and I don't want to go down a rabbit hole, because I know we have a lot of work to do. But can you define the difference between a walkable community and a T O D? I was talking to a planner down Greenwich yesterday, and she was saying maybe T O D is not as trendy as we used, not trendy, but as relevant as it used to be. Because of the changes in work habits and certainly the train and Connecticut Metro North is not very good. So, I mean, I like, what's the, what's the difference between a walkable and T O D?
I think there's overlap. I think that, you know, if you're drawing the Venn diagram, you know, I think, I think a walkable community doesn't necessarily have to have transit. So it's like the Stratfield Village, where you can get to pick up your gallon of milk, take, take out food, right? So it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily have to have a transit hub adjacent to it to be a walkable community. But good T O D normally has a lot of diverse business opportunities, availability for folks to do all the things that they want to do within a generally walkable radius, but it also gives them access to something that can take them to a job center that might be farther away. So, so that to me is kind of the difference, but there's, you know, there's a lot of overlap between the two. So that would, you know, that would be, that would be my description of them. I don't, did, did she indicate something?
No, I, you know, honestly, I was just kind of just absorbing what she was saying, so I didn't really ask a lot of questions, but yeah, that, that's fair.
I think that's why too, when we talk about T O D, we want to make sure that there, we're placemaking, as well as making sure that if we're talking about a T O D district, and this was, I think, what the, what the plan did is it said, you know, there are sites where maybe we can focus some of that place making, like 81 Black, Black Rock, the fact that they wanted to put parks in the front. And there are some sites where we definitely want a mixture of commercial, so that there are things for those residents to be able to buy from and go to and eat at and all those things.
If I can walk to town, I can walk to the beach, I can walk, I could even walk to the train station. That's very walkable, and I got sidewalks, so.
Okay, go ahead, all right. So for sustainable prosperous community recommendations, if we go to, it's going to be page 30, which is the blue page. So you'll see 31, which is the blank page on the right. So this, this harkens back to some of the T O D discussion in terms of promoting T O D. And we're going to have to, obviously, we should probably update everything that says Fairfield Metro to Fairfield Black Rock at this point, I'm just seeing that.
Official.
It is official. So we'll have to, we'll have to make those changes within the document. This also includes that conversation about extending the Center Design Business District to the west and to the east, because we want to promote more walkable community areas and design standards. We eliminated that direct reference to the X side site, but really just kind of talked about the extension of that corridor to include both of those primary things, the, the built, the better foot, building footprints in terms of proximity to the street and the design standards. One of the things that we've also talked about in, in result of some of the calls that we get in the office is exploring a home professional office overlay for Black Rock Turnpike and Tuxus Hill Cut Off that would permit owner-occupied housing to include appointment-based professional businesses such as lawyers, therapists, psychiatrists, and accountants to be located on the ground floor. When you think about the Black Rock Turnpike Commercial District, there's this whole area that extends on Black Rock Turnpike South to Tuxus Hill, where we get calls in particular where people say, oh, I want to buy this, but I want to locate my office on the ground floor, and they don't realize that it's residentially zoned. I used to work in Milford, where they had a residence office district that was similar to this. So it's a nice way to kind of transition when you, when you're on that kind of busier connector corridor, and it allows a little bit more commerce, mix of commercial residential, but obviously not at a, not at a scale that's not consistent with the existing house that's there.
So are you talking about where that, there's like an accounting office on the corner? Like there's a, where one of the lights is, like, right by?
Where it's placed, that intersection.
Yeah, okay. Are you talking?
It's actually still in the commercial district, but there, but there's just this area that's actually zoned residential that's on Black Rock Turnpike, that isn't zoned commercial at all. So, you know, the, the idea would be if somebody wants to purchase one of those houses and they want to, you know, spend the money to convert the ground floor to an office where we know it's just kind of like a single shingle practitioner, whether it's a therapist, an attorney, and they want to work out of their house, it allows them to be able to do that without, you know, because right now our home, our home occupation regulations are only for very limited businesses. So somebody like an attorney, somebody like a therapist, we, if they call us today, we have to say no, because they're not allowed to do that, so.
Change.
I don't.
I thought it was permitted.
No, we used to have.
Music teacher is.
Don't have. A long time, change a long time ago.
So that the, the traditional regulations.
Easy. So we, we thought, but, but I think, so that could be something where, again, if you look at this, you guys could decide, well, why don't we allow folks to do this anywhere? I think at the time, it was, it was thought to be this very discreet, you know, residential is residential, commercial is commercial, and we don't mix the two.
Can we, as a group, discuss that? Because in one of my markups, there's this whole motion, it's gaining some traction in cities. I mean, the, one of the big issues is you can't, back to walk bill, you can't walk anywhere. There are very few places you can walk in Fairfield and, you know, get a cup of coffee, do anything. I think Alexis and I were talking about, one of her friends wanted to cut hair. The restrictions are very tight, and some places they have something called accessory commercial unit, where you can put in a very limited use occupation in, in your home dwelling. And the restrictions on it, and you've got to talk to the neighbors, I think Raleigh, North Carolina, it's, the footnote is in one of my markups. But is that something we can discuss as a, because I, I know that, I mean, we all know, for those of us who lived in Fairfield for a while, there used to be more dentists that were located.
In their house.
In their house, yeah. You know, and I talked to Matt about that, he said they've been grandfathered, the ones that are existing are still grandfathered.
Yeah, that changed, I want to say in the early 90s, there are home occupation, we have, our home occupation definition now is generally things that are not customer-client traffic-based. The exception was you could have the, a home office physician or dentist.
Right.
They lived in the house.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw that Commissioner Corso was up, you'll be up next, sorry.
So it got kind of contracted because the way the practice of medicine was going, that, you know, the neighborhood doctor was kind of a dinosaur, and it was, but, but that's not to say that we can't have a more broader conversation about that. But I, I think that that would be better placed in our next step of talking about the regulations as a whole, rather than being a specific P O C D recommendation, but, but that's certainly a topic that.
My request is that we somehow entertain this and evaluate it, see if it's, see if there's community support for it, see if there's community opposition to it. Because right now with our Euclidean-based zoning, you know, very distinctly separating uses, you know, it, we, we don't, it's difficult to walk anyplace, to do anything, and that's why we have, it's a contributor to traffic.
So then do we want, do we, okay, so if we discuss this as a board, if we pull back and go more general, do we want to just say explore a home-based professional office lay that would permit? And we'll just strike out the Black Rock Turnpike and Tuxus Hill Cut Off language? And then you guys can have this, because keep in mind that this is, you know, this is our broad policy statement. And then when you get into the zoning regulations, those are all public hearings, those are discussions that you're going to have amongst yourselves as a board. And then the, you know, we'll have notice public hearings where we can get input from folks who, you know, may have wanted to do this, but couldn't, or, you know, had to get a variance or something like that, or even neighbors who might say, oh, please only consider it in these areas, right? So this is not where we have this full discussion, I think it's where we identify needs that we've heard in the community to expand potential for economic development, future uses, and then we could, because we still have to have that zoning conversation.
My, my only add to that would be remove the word professional, because you've got people who fix lawnmowers, and that's, that's a.
Do we, do we want to say home, do we want to say home business overlay?
Or appointment-based business.
No, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I always, I like the idea of professional, because I don't think it's like mechanics in the backyard.
We have, we have them now, right?
Yeah.
We have them now.
Well, I mean, not as, not in the.
I mean, oh, really?
Yes.
Well, again, we've had, again, not to get in.
I see Tom, don't worry.
We've had enforcement issues with folks that do car repairs at their home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And so I think we want to kind of constrain it to some degree.
Some environmental concerns, I think.
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah, if we.
No smelting.
No oil in the.
And I don't know, do you really want somebody doing a.
I mean, listen, even if we just take, even if you just say explore the home office overlay, take out the Black Rock Tuxus, maybe keep professional businesses in there, at least give the impression, at least give the, the idea that we're looking at that area. Now, if we're thinking of something that's not necessarily a professional business, they can still see that we're open to the idea to come forward. Because it's not a regulation hearing that we're going to get something specific.
About a face to end profession.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Question.
Theoretical.
I gotta get to Tom, he's been there for a long time, you're next. It's fine, Tom, go ahead.
I was, I was going to say, so, so Commissioner Randolph and I did not talk about this ahead of time, but, but actually, one of my recommendations that I had submitted was, was this very thing about accessory commercial units and, and quote, corner cafes. I, I think, I think there, it's a different enough concept that it makes sense to, to distinguish between the two, whether they're two recommendations or, or just somehow otherwise differentiated. Because there's the, you know, I think just because of COVID and the way things have been, have been trending even prior to COVID, the whole idea of work from home and businesses from home and the professional office overlay, I think is, is one concept. But I think there's a separate concept of this, you know, a more of a retail-type establishment as an accessory use. So, so I do think, even if it's just a matter of articulating it within a distinction between the two within one recommendation, I think that can make sense, or, or having them separate. But I, I think considering it is certainly worth it. And Melan, I would prefer to, to do it as part of this process rather than a regulatory discussion later, just because I think it's, it's a novel enough concept that it would be nice to, to get input from folks during the public hearing process.
So what I, Commissioner Seaver.
Do we have consensus on that, or what?
Although we're not, I will, but, Commissioner Seaver, then we'll.
I just want to make sure I understand, when you talk about the term business overlay, if you will, you're talking about a separate structure on the property?
No.
You're talking about.
Converting the ground floor to an office?
Okay.
And then somebody lives above.
Okay.
So you wouldn't be adding a different structure, you'd just be converting part of the house into an office use?
Right, so the example of my wife, who is a certified marriage and family therapist, who, who has an office on Post Road, and she, she also subleases, because she doesn't do it, she's not there five times a week. In our home, she has an office, one of, one of our spare rooms, that's her office, okay? So how does that, does that fit into this definition?
Well, theoretically, right now, she's not supposed to be seeing clients there.
Really?
Yes.
I'm just trying to understand, because.
He's going to write you out.
No, I mean, she does telehealth.
Oh, yeah, having, having, having a home office for anybody is fine. The, the, the current constraints for a current home occupation.
Yeah, is it not take more than 25% of the floor area?
It's not. Don't employ non-resident employees.
Just trying to understand.
You don't have customer-client traffic. So if she's doing conferencing.
Doing telehealth from her.
Right, that's, that's perfectly fine, there's probably, there's lots of.
Just trying to understand.
It's no different than, than you having a Zoom meeting from your living room.
Okay, thank you.
But what, what present regulations prohibit is the customers, the clients coming to your home.
I, now, I just want to make sure I understood.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is a couple of things, and Tom, thanks for the clarity. I think what bullet point three is suggesting is a more defined potential office overlay. But there also seems to be a desire to have a broader conversation about home-based businesses in general that may be a, a broader than a specific area where you think there might be potential to have some office residential mix versus, you know, is, should we, should we bring back a, you know, doctor's office if they, if they're living in the house, that conversation? So I think there's, there's, I agree, there's, there's two, there's more than one level to this. There's the, there's what's articulated here, and I'm hearing that perhaps you don't necessarily want to be as geographically constrained as what's being represented here, but explore opportunities for potential office overheads. But at the same time, in addition to that, I think what I'm hearing is that you're looking for a broader conversation about home-based businesses in general.
Well, let's start with what we have here. Let's work at the, let's go through this. Does, is there a thought or consensus, the commission, for at the very least taking out the Black Rock Turnpike and Tuxus Hill Cut Off geographic limitations? I would be okay with that. And again, this, again, this is all non-binding, so should two months from now you change your mind and new information, we can always vote again. But I mean, is there a, can I, do I see a, I see, thank you, Tom, a thumbs up is always easy.
I have a question.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to get that, okay. Sorry, I'm getting, I'm seeing consensus on that, but Commissioner Braun, go ahead.
Um, do we have a plan for doing something with Tuxus Hill Kings Highway in terms of developing it as mixed use? I didn't really see the same thing that we had for like downtown area. It seems to me like if we're trying to make that upgraded to have mixed use or more attractive or whatever, design standards, that I worry about siphoning away businesses, business activity from the area where it could be. And what happens then? Does it affect our tax base? Does, do we lose commercial establishments if we sort of say, everybody in town can put a business in their house of any type of, you know, more than they can now? So that's a question I have.
So it's strategy B on the blue page? That's, so right now that area is designed commercial district zoned? So we do have identified, looking at some of the similar things where, because, because I could see, for example, and we've had. People contact us about King's Highway and wanting to do mixed use developments there. So we do need to look at the regulations that. Govern that district, and so that is identified in strategy B. As well as in number two, reexamine the permitted uses in that district. To see whether or not we need to update them based on what business use requests are today. So so we're not ignoring that section. It just falls within the design commercial district.
Do you think we do is do you think we need more of a focus on that area, which frankly could use a lot of help? Is there something or that we should be doing to develop that area?
I mean, we could, we could always identify a study, like a study to do a specific, you know, walkability. Code revisions in terms of the form and everything else.
It's not really close to the train.
The design commercial district in general.
Highway Tungstus Hill, you know.
But you're talking about King's Highway from like, uh, what is it, Miller?
I'm looking at the car wash and then the other.
But starting where you get off at the exit for Black Rock? And then King's Highway going east that way towards where Port of Ed is? Is that the stretch you're talking?
Yeah, yeah, you're right, that's. Ends up for you there. Yeah, I think I'm talking about that. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I what I would say is that I think informally, the Economic Development Commission has been kind of. Hinting that they'd like us to do a study in that area, so I think we can certainly add that as a strategy.
To study, yeah.
If that's in field too, could we think about that? I just think it's not far from their Parkway. There's a university close by.
So one of the things that we have identified in uh strategy A. Uh, number four is to look at the bus depot drop off areas and to see whether or not we can develop those. Whether it would be appropriate to do kind of like a small, almost like Stratfield, because when you look at the Stratfield. Commercial areas, it's a lot of takeout food businesses, so the parcels and those commercial buildings are not very large. And so those similar sized buildings would fit in that eastern, we think, in that eastern Parkway. Uh, eastern turnpike. Eastern, eastern turnpike.
By the by the new uh Sacred Heart Campus.
Yeah, because there was, there was like a bus drop off area.
Back entrance to.
When it was G E, but now those are just kind of sitting there, so that has been on our list to look at that and see whether or not. We can um zone those little pieces on both sides, get them back from the state and zone those as a little commercial village.
Also just thinking where they did all the great work um on the Stratfield Road, Churchill Road. I know some folks, you guys live down there, but I'm just thinking like that's prime for, I think. Some redevelopment too.
Well, now let's, okay.
I won't go for anyone.
No, that's okay. Let's just circle back to the three. Yeah.
So my my question, though, also was, is is there any concern? Is there any concern of siphoning off? Businesses if you allow people to do all their business anywhere else from the commercial areas? Are we worried about having an empty commercial area or emptying commercial area? And does that affect our tax base?
Well, I I don't think that we're talking that that we're. The scale it what this is recommending is not larger office spaces. These are like solo practitioner type of. Operators that would be living in the house based.
Be owner occupied.
Right, that would be owner occupied, so it's not leasable. Um, we're not talking about converting homes to leasable office square footage. We're talking about someone who might live there. Who also may have a a business entity that they can conduct there as owner of the of the property in which they live. So uh, so that's one element of that. So that's 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 what this says now. Uh, and then then there was a second piece to that.
Okay, then the next part we thought about was whether if we want to. Pull back from the idea of it being professional only, if maybe it's just take out the word professional, let's just include. Appointment based businesses such as and let that kind of sit as is.
Or you could just keep it as low impact business. Because we're we're just committing to studying this now.
Well, that's the key. I mean, that's the key is we're only committing to studying it. We're committing, we're 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 evidencing an intent to look into this idea. It doesn't need to be so exact at this point, because there may be somebody that comes to us with that's, I I don't know, that's not appointment based. Business that we're interested in doing it, uh, and that would be through a regulation amendment, which we'd actually have specifics on. So I mean, I would say maybe just take out professional and just leave it as is.
Would I say such as? Yeah, you got such as.
Yeah, just take out professional and just leave businesses and let, I think appointment base is good, because I don't think you really want people just. At least in this aspect, walking in and out like you would a cafe, but we but we will turn to Tom's next point in retail in a second, but at least in this one. Um, keeping the appointment base may give a maybe good for this instance.
Why would we take up professional though? Aren't they was all professional, the one we're talking about?
Well, the idea is not to limit it to just professional businesses. I'm I just can't think of an example offhand, but if it's just appointment based business. Maybe.
A hairdresser.
Yeah, a lot.
Yeah, I mean, I always still think that's professional too, but I don't want to like, you know. You know. Yeah, I just figured appointment based business might be just giving the a broad intent. And let, you know, give the express what we're trying, express what we're trying to do, but may not open it up to the masses, so to speak.
I would assume once we pass a regulation that would require special permits, we'd.
Well, that that'll be up to you, but I think that that the idea is when you get to the next step, if you're going to implement something, there'd have to be hairfully crafted. On the one hand, it may be, you you may not have an objection to a one on one hairstylist, but but. Which is an appointment based, but you can conceptually make an appointment to go get your oil changed too, and I'm not so sure that's something.
Well, I mean, maybe leave professional in then for now. I mean, I don't, it's up to you guys. What do we think? Leave it in for now? Leaving the word professional in and just.
Yeah.
There for now. More, yeah, Tom, we're going to your next one. Oh, he's okay with that.
I I raised I raised my hand by accident, sorry.
Okay, so we're okay with leaving that in now. Now, Tom's final point was whether you want either. In this recommendation or in a separate recommendation to have something that is like this, a first floor. Commercial use that's retail, Tom, right? Whether it's.
Yeah, like a corner cafe essentially, like a small, small coffee shop, something like that. And and I think to to the previous discussion, it is substantially different from a. Uh, an appointment based business, so I think it may make sense to have it as a separate recommendation.
Are you are you just, I'm sorry to to jump in, but you're suggesting that would be permitted as a use in a residential district?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Harrison.
Um, yeah, thank you. I just had a question, um, maybe through you to to Commissioner Corcello. Would are you, are you thinking like a, would there be a time allotment? Attached to it?
Go ahead, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, 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 go ahead.
I was gonna say, I I think there is a lot to be considered. That would be certainly be be one consideration. Um.
Tom, I suspect, I suspect what you're gonna say is something along lines of ex like this language, explore.
Explore, exactly.
So nothing that's.
It's not binding.
Yeah, I mean, again, going back to the fact that this is a ten year, a ten year plan, we have, we have uh time to explore.
And that's, yeah, that exploration would be in a regulation amendment or such, but.
It's interesting to explore. Um. I know Commissioner Randolph, we talked about this a while ago. I think it's interesting.
Yeah, it it.
I would just be concerned about how many health issues, health department that gets a little dicey, but.
Well, it's it's pretty, it's it's been done, so so we we can, there there's. There's two or three different limiting factors. One is. Is it, do the neighbors approve of it, right? So you have to get to consensus of, you know, from your adjoining neighbors. You know, if they object to it, they can shut it down. So it's almost a special exception by the neighbors. The second is, um, what are they conducting? Is it noisy? Is it dangerous? You know, but think of like a bookstore. Somebody specifically asked me, they said, oh. Can I open a bookstore? A bookstore is a is not an appointment based business, but it's low impact, and people probably wouldn't object to it. Um, a coffee shop could be fifty fifty, but if you limit the number, the size of the square footage of it. There's all sorts of different factors that would have to be evaluated and considered, and it's been done before, so we're not, this is not. A new idea. It's a new idea for us, but there we would exploring it, we'd look at all these different factors.
Isn't that fall into restaurant though, and then you have to have the allocated spots?
We make the rules.
Well, that's the idea is again.
And we don't. There's the health code, there's the building.
Yeah, yeah, no.
So I think we would need to understand kind of the. Complicating factors that either, you know, really kind of make this viable or not viable. What would this mean in terms of? In order to fit in all those hand sinks and those things and those.
Just to be simple about a restaurant. Wouldn't be a restaurant.
But if your coffee shop's considered a food and drink item. And they might sell pastries, they might sell, they can't just make all their money on coffee.
And then you guys know that there is, so state statute presently allows for all the cottage business. So folks who. Folks who bake things for like farmers markets, like there's a certain production cap in that, but. Uh, what they were finding is that people wanted to kind of try these businesses out at a very small scale, so the state. Approved like cottage, a cottage business license. So I think it's like, for example, if you make. Special sausages, it's up to a certain. Production cap per year. Jams and jellies, same thing, a certain production cap per year. That's already allowed, but.
It's allowed, but but again, the caveat is, you know, you you can bake pies or cakes or desserts. If you're a pastry chef. You don't need now your own separate commercial kitchen. You can do it in your home under a cottage business license. But our rules say you can't, you can't conduct that retail at your house. Like I can bake pies. For. You know, Old Post Tavern to to sell as their desserts, and they pay me to make their desserts, but but I don't have people coming to my house to buy a pie. You know, or or I bake cookies and I sell them at the farmer's market, but people aren't coming to my house to buy to get the cookies. I mean, that that's something you could do today. Um, I think if we're leaving it as, you know, exploratory language to consider, um. No pushback here, but I think you you might get ultimate public pushback if we're talking about introducing. A broader commercial use in a in in a traditional residential neighborhood. That's that's all, but in. I'm just wondering if there might be another commercial category you could establish versus doing that, but.
I'll just address adjust your question. So.
One more time.
The the. The health department, the fire regulations would all create boundaries around this. So back to. Serving coffee versus frying ham, making hamburgers. Hamburgers or a grill, you need a need a fire suppression system. It gets complicated. You couldn't do that. Um, it's we we create, we would study this to create constraints to say, maybe you could sell the muffins that the gym's making. Right, it but it wouldn't, the 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 constraints would would would.
They have to get a food license for that. Like you go to the edge and they have like a health drink thing.
Whatever they need to do, yeah.
But the the constraints would evidence themselves pretty quick.
Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I was thinking, are we interested in something like what I would call.
Lemon is food.
I mean, that's. Sort of a local, community oriented business. You know, so it's community oriented, it's local and low density. As opposed to, you know, something that serves the immediate neighborhood as opposed to. The a deli or commercial, which is serving a far larger.
He's thinking like farmers, when they used to sell stuff outside their home, like.
That's weird, it's it's called the truck garden. It's a permitted home occupation. As long as you're selling what you're growing on site. If you've got a plot of land and you're growing tomatoes or corn, you can have a stand out in front. But but what you can't do is. You know. Buy a truckload of corn from New Jersey, have it delivered and then sell it at your property, but if you're growing it, you can sell it.
And just one more question just for Tom, Chris, um, are you are you just limiting it to corners? When you said corner cafes?
No, I I that's that's sort of a a uh just a colloquy. Or for this concept in in other places that it's done. So so, uh, no, not that. It's not that specific.
I mean, the thought would be then a separate recommendation that says something along long lines of explore. A, what was the language you used?
Local, community oriented. Low density business. It's you're we're we're getting there.
I mean, I but I think that kind of expresses maybe, I mean. I think that may express the the idea and also limit it to some extent. I mean, again, that depends on what.
If you have a massive house, you could, you could have fifty people at a given time, I suppose.
I mean, I I also, I think we may want to include the word retail in there. The other recommendation.
Say again, I'm sorry.
I said, I I we may want to consider including the word retail, just so it's not confused with the, so people aren't confusing it with the other recommendation. Saying what's the difference here?
So say it with retail in it.
Sure. Well, the way of the what what you've got in your. Bullet point is corner cafes. Would you consider allowing corner cafes and select other small retail use slash accessory commercial units? And residential zones, perhaps by a special permit, which kind of encompasses your uh. Jeff, your concept of accessory commercial units.
Related question, we've got a number of grandfather retail locations in that are scattered around town. What's the feedback we get on those, if any?
Perfect example is. Deli is a how is a home and a deli. I think it's been grandfather, but you'll never see one of those, that type of thing again.
Home too downtown.
I mean, that's that's an example.
What what's the feedback on that?
Um, well, it's it's on reef and it's uh. Has I drive that street. More than I'd like to admit to. Um, it has a lot of the contractors will come there and pick up their coffee. Their sandwich is very popular. He's got good food, but. It can sometimes have a little traffic, you know, and stoppage of traffic.
Positive or negative?
It's all what you're used to, right? It's this is if if you introduced it today, if it wasn't there today and you were looking to propose it. I think there would be a lot of blowback.
Yeah.
Um, if kind of the the example I used with the community theater marquee. Is is if if that didn't have that marquee and you're putting that big neon marquee out now, I think people would. Push back, but if you tried to take it away, no, that's an iconic landmark, you know, so.
Be an absolute protest.
Yeah, I I so to your question, if if that, if BUDS didn't exist today and they were looking to establish it, I think there would be neighborhood. Blowback, maybe my sense.
There's that candy shop on Careful Beach Road for the longest time back.
Oh, it's ice cream, ice cream.
It was charming. I mean, people actually, they like these things. It makes the town kind of cool.
Sure, I mean, I used to, I used to uh to the Mattia's Deli on on Old Field Road was there was a was a. You know, two two apartments above and a deli below and uh. It was a great place, but then there was a fire, the family didn't want to do it. Now they tore it down and there's a two family house there. It's an interesting concept, and I think that's where we're at. One.
Conversely, just to Kathy's point, I mean, she was saying maybe it could be construed as taking away businesses maybe from some of the main streets. Maybe it's actually opening up opportunities for other people to not be able to have the means to afford to rent a retail shop downtown. And they want to do it part time, and they just want to do it Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, 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 right. And and that's the irony. We're talking about small scale.
Yeah.
Things that that if they've been the part of the fabric of the community for a long time, they're seen as a real asset. Uh, in in kind of a throwback, uh, in, but you're trying to introduce something like that now. There's, so I understand what you're trying, but it that just has to be communicated that way, that we're not looking to do this everywhere. Not everybody's gonna do it, uh, but it's just something to consider providing additional opportunity.
So related to this, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, if we if we have consensus on that, is that fair? I mean. It's the exploratory, basically, okay. Okay.
Related to this, um, what are the regulations on food trucks?
Food trucks presently, they need a. Well, they need health department approval, transient merchant's license from the police department. The way we've dealt with it is if you're in the public domain, if you're on like on on the public street. Then it's regulated, but the police department has the. Authority to say, hey, you're creating an unsafe situation. You can't be here, you need to move. Um, but we don't, the commission has not supported in the past food trucks on private property, like, all right.
Parking lot, parking the front.
Like a.
Front lawn and just operate.
You know, having a, you know, three or four food trucks, the parking lot of Home Depot, for example. Um, has not been, there've been applications made to the for site plan approval, and the commission in the past has been not receptive to that.
Regulations.
It's gonna be on private commercial property, it would be up to you. The the pushback within the communities, particularly within the food service community, so. Is, hey, you're providing an advantage to somebody. I'm I'm paying rent at a brick and mortar establishment to 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 provide the same kind of food that you're allowing this guy to. Park it, you know, Veterans Park and sell hot dogs and uh to kind of compete with me. So it's it's a. It's an interesting thing. Some some larger communities have set aside. Some some larger communities have set aside commercial, make a commercial and made a food truck haven. It becomes an attractive thing and it's in a commercial area. But there's, you know, there's, there's, we've had a couple of food trucks that operate.
There used to be a food truck that would show up at Fairfield Metro that I haven't seen for a couple of years now.
Something, obviously. The cafe opened up.
Uh, the cafe in lieu of the.
That's my guess.
Okay, cuz, yeah. All right.
What explains that? What's our, uh, cuz I I know fellow Seattleite, um, food trucks were really, I mean, they were really additive part of the urban fabric in Seattle. Like you could get coffee, like we have almost no coffee shops in this town. There are few compared to like New Haven or other places.
Get through that to Seattle coffee. You're not comparing it to Seattle coffee.
No, but I'm but I'm just saying that we we, um, it feels, it it, I I'm under the impression that there's been a, um, a strict regulation of food, of basically transitory food service vehicles. How how do we feel as a commission about that? Is that appropriate? Is it an opportunity to have more food opportunities? What how do we feel as a commission?
I mean, are you thinking like, as
To study.
As Mr. White had said, you know, we are normally, we've been less receptive having them on private property cuz that's really where our domain is. So are you asking to look into that of kind of promoting that?
I think, I mean.
As you said, exploring.
Public or pri, uh, public or private, I don't know what the restraints are, but it feels as if they're.
As he said, I mean, if he parks on the street or you see them and sometimes. Like Mohegan, if it's public prop, if it's public domain, that's not.
Generally, I would assume that if it's if it's at Lake Mohegan, it's because the recreation department specifically.
Yeah.
Coordinated with that vendor.
Never one at Lake Mohegan, but there, it's an opportunity to have one.
Like tasty yolk.
The Parks and Rec Commission could, if they wanted to have a vendor, they could contract out and do that on their their auspices. So that's out of our domain. What I'm saying is if if, um, tasty yolk, tasty yolk wanted to set up in the parking lot of Home Depot, that's in your domain.
Yeah.
They set up on.
They were there for a day.
St. Elias, they're there every.
Right, they're on the public street, they're up beside Drive.
People like it there.
And anybody, any food truck has that.
Which I think is kind of a nice.
Well, um, I was on the RTM when we passed the food truck ordinance, and so that was done by town ordinance with the RTM. Many, many requirements, background checks, this and that, health, whatever.
It's a transient merchants permit.
This might be the one we're looking about.
No specific food truck.
That was passed like ten years ago, let's say. But for ours, I do have a little concern that it could siphon business from our regular restaurants, like what you were saying. That it would be, they would not have the same requirements for parking or anything like that if they're just sitting on the Home Depot parking lot. But you probably get some opposition, I imagine, from restaurants and.
Well, again, where do you, where do you draw the line? You say, okay, there, and then you've got, you've got.
Well, anybody could do it.
Place, yeah, I mean, I'll go back, well.
I wonder if they have, is there, Jeff, you know, is there a demand for, just to be clear, cuz I'm just curious.
The demand for food trucks is for private events. Really a big deal as far as like parking it on the corner. It's not like Manhattan where you, they're fighting over a severed hot dog corner where a million people, there's more people going there than in that corner. It's just, I just don't see it. I I know a lot of people in that have a food truck and they make, um, ninety percent of their money on private events or they park it at Durrell for a wedding or at Penfield, you know, it's just, uh, it's a big investment, they're like seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand if you're doing it, you know.
It used to be like a crepe one on Post Road at the library. I never saw anyone there, so I was just curious.
I don't.
But if you give them like the flexibility to be like, I'll park here next to Colony Pizza and then they're serving a pizza and, you know, I I agree with Catherine, they're just kind of siphoning off of a brick and mortar place that's, you know, paying property tax and a whole, you know, all the other after your charges that are involved in that business.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, who's our constituents? Is it people in the community who, what I constantly heard is there's no services in this town. No ser, you can't walk to any service. Like, you know, in in my neighborhood, you said Stratfield's walkable, it's not, Stratfield's not walkable. You can't walk anywhere, you can't get, it's really, you gotta jump in a car and you gotta go someplace. If we had, and tasty yolk seems to defy what you're saying, that place, that place is an institution now. People love that place. And so I'm just wondering if there's, if we could consider, uh, encouraging, you know, really more more uses other than the 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 homogeneity of single family residential use throughout the town and allowing just or encouraging more, you know, a diversity of uses, so. But, you know, like in in Seattle, for example, they're they're, it's set up like gas stations. You know, you'd have a, you'd have like an artisanal coffee place, not even a fancy neighborhood. They have a little coffee truck there and people would, there's a little community gathering spot and not a densely populated area, not the city like, you know, Fairfield density. So I'm just wondering if we, if we're missing an opportunity to bring more amenities.
Well, I think there's a, a.
We have an opportunity.
And maybe you talk to the people that have, they'll tell you kind of what the margins are with, you know, the truck itself. You know, how much, uh, pedestrian traffic is there? I mean, it's just, it's just a whole formula that.
Talking about.
It's a restaurant business, it's like a crap shoot anyway.
Gas station.
Yeah.
I I just, well, I'll I'll go back to an infamous, an infamous meeting that happened probably twenty-five plus years ago. There there used to be seasonal applications to do, oh, at Easter time, we want to sell flowers at this gas station or this gas station, other gas station. At one point, you know, the commission finally said, okay, all right, it's, you start with flowers on Easter, then then where are we going? Next thing we know, we're 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 going to progress to Elvis on development. That that's kind of was the famous, the famous quote is, it's one thing to in your mind to say, an artisanal coffee shop at a, at a. I know what you're talking about.
I I get the idea, like.
That's in Vegas.
But it's one thing to say it's okay to have an artisanal coffee cart at at a gas station, but where do you draw the line? Okay, but then then he's gonna be selling chacha coffee, we we have to go and test the coffee. I I will say, I haven't, I I I haven't had a single call from anybody that I can recall demanding, hey, we need more food trucks in town. So I understand what you're saying.
An evolution of gas stations, right? All of the gas stations have gone from having service stations to convenience markets, right?
Yeah, they do.
So 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 in and of itself, I think the marketplace has kind of met that.
Coffee coffees.
Certain extent.
Can I just back up a minute? I think, I think.
Here's the thing too, I mean, even now, even Fairfield not being walkable, as you said, I don't think more food trucks is gonna do that cuz you're still driving to get to.
Right. I'm just, I'm just throwing.
And I appreciate, I mean, I think that's certainly worthy of it, I'm not, I just, I'm not sure.
Like a fish, if you had something there.
Yeah, but I I mean, I would, I I have to disagree cuz I I live right around the corner from.
Yeah.
From B.
From Myoni's and the Bagel and the Mobile. And, um, I can get a cup of coffee at the Bagel, I can get a Bagel with egg cheese at the Bagel and I can go to the Mobile and I can get a cup of coffee at the Mobile. So I don't know why we would need a, a coffee rock or there. I just don't get it.
I I'm just saying that, I'm just, you guys have answered my question. I'm just, I'm just asking whether there's any openness to, generally, to food trucks.
Yeah, that's a general.
Yeah, I just.
Get that.
Peripherally related.
Read that. There you go, that's what I mean.
These stuff, clothing drop off places, who controls those? I see them everywhere. Someone told me once that those are like not even legit.
They're mostly scams.
Are they scams?
Mostly.
Drop their clothes off all the time.
There's, there's, well, the transfer station's a scam.
What are they, I mean, who controls them?
Well, a lot, a lot of times, we are really. A lot of instances where clothes have just appeared without the permission of the property owner and they will call the town, hey, where the heck did this thing come from? And 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 they're not all scams, many of them are labeling themselves as these things, but there's no really overarching, they just take the stuff and either recycle it or resell it or, uh, do other things. Not all of those bins are really.
But no one control, we can't say you can't do that? I mean, they could just put.
And we've had, we've had enforcement issues in the past cuz they tend to take up parking spaces and and usually.
Riverfield all the time.
Well, again, that may be a different, that's a piece of town, Lane or Board of Ed, I don't know what that.
Oh, okay.
Is, but.
Okay, that was just a question.
I just wanted to go back. Tom will be back. I just want to go back a couple of pages cuz we're really, we're just trying to kind of focusing on the red changes that we've been made since the last draft.
Do you have a hard copy of the last draft? Cuz you, I know you pass it out, but I I have it on this, but do you have like the hard, this one?
Yeah, I have the one I had of last, you weren't here this right.
No. I have it on my iPad.
I had, I have an extra one here.
Thank you.
I forgot you were not president.
Where we at?
So I wanted to just go back, and Emma Line was gonna get to it, but but back on page twenty-eight, within this, we did insert a paragraph that was from our TPW department recognizing um, the need to look into the sewer capacity and that that roughly fifty percent, and you've seen probably articles about this and it's bonding, that roughly fifty percent of what's being treated is infiltrate, inflow and infiltration, it's not real sewage. And if there's, an investment needs to be made to reduce the amount of groundwater inflow and infiltration so that the sanitary sewer system is actually treating sewage and not rainwater. So there's, so leading into these further red, back to page twenty-eight, I I think this is a really good, really good question. Um, I'm not, the, in talking to people, they don't seem to understand the criticality of this. So I'm wondering if you could even make this more specific by putting dollar values, the bonding amount.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble, we don't understand the what value of.
So for the sewer capacity, a lot of, a lot of feed, a lot of people don't understand the criticality of upgrading sewer system and how important this is and how much investment needs to be made. So I think this is a great addition, and if you could even make it more specific, uh, that would probably be helpful to improve people's understanding of this.
I have a follow up question on that also, in terms of what portion is paid by ratepayers and what portion is paid by our bonding capital improvement?
Well, those are, those are decisions that get made at the administrative level, uh.
But it's the WPCA that assesses rates.
The WPCA assesses rates and but some of that is paid, is as I, I will say, my limited understanding of it, some of the money comes out of the INI fee that they collect for cert, for development projects. But there's also some town money that comes into this, and the justification for that is articulated as certain, certain growth can't happen out of that, and and that tax based growth accrues to the entirety of the town, not just the sewer grand list increases, it it increases for everybody, not just those that are connected to the sewer system. So but those are decisions that really aren't, want to be made by this commission that are made by the 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 chief elected official, the board finance, the RTM and the WPCA.
Um, it would be nice to hear from the WPCA cuz every time I talk to one of the guys in that commission, I learn something. I mean, it is very interesting and complicated.
Well, this is the feedback we got, direct language that they recommended and where that ties in.
DPW.
Who manages the WPCA?
WPCA, they support the WPCA, I guess, but.
They're staffed them.
The whole thing with the digester, they were supposedly, WPCA was, something went confluent with that relationship, I, yes.
Again, I I I think that's beyond the scope of of frankly, the commission's authority. Um, but it's here because there's a recommendation, because if it's in the P O C D, then it becomes a potentially grant eligible opportunity for them to.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, cuz we we're not funding.
No.
So I'm I'm not sure if it's appropriate for this to be in here, but. Well, it should be in here because there's a lot of state dollars that can be allocated. We could, I would like market go for that. But they they asked for, have you planned for this? Is this an identified issue? And so that's where, when we talk to all departments in town, you know. I know we have a, Adrian's too, where I know that's needed.
Yeah, I think the tie in is, there there are certain strategies here that talk about expanding housing opportunity, and that needs to be coupled with the fact that that might, there needs to be improvements to the sanitary sewer system to accommodate that, so that's why.
So. And and also state statute requires that we talk about our sewer capacity right now.
In the P O C D, yeah.
Yes.
I'm, yeah. Yeah, we mentioned funding, priority funding, property tax revenue should be considered to achieve system repair upgrades, not only to all development. Pressing us, well, it's to handle the current band as well as anything the P O C D is.
Right.
Spreading out, right? It's needed now, according to us.
Yes.
But. Should we expand the funding? It's not just property tax revenue, it could be state, state has funds for that?
Well, again, by making it a priority and and then when you get to the blue page on thirty.
What do you mean by priority funding? Does that have?
No, 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 it just, it it is a priority that the town needs to do this.
Okay.
So that's why it's listed here because this is a, this is a repair problem that needs to be solved. Very clearly from our, from our public works director, um, and also, um, I think John Bodie also says as well. So this is a priority for the town.
Okay.
This is a very bad level of efficiency for our plant. Most plants have, you know, if they have a deficiency, it's like a twenty percent. We're, we are beyond that. This needs to be repaired, that's why it's in here.
This language is proposed to us by WPCR.
Yes.
The pork director.
It's actually repairing and not expanding to another neighborhood.
Correct.
Correct. How old is that, our sewer system?
Fifty plus.
Depends on which part of town, probably.
A lot of them are, you know.
You know, they're aging.
Pipes. So again, that's why that, where number six comes from, the number seven, number, we're back on page thirty. Number seven, uh, is is, again, the consciousness of every time, and we talked about this last time, housing opportunities. This is to recognize that we need to continue to coordinate impact of any increased hopping out opportunities with Board of Education facilities planning.
That's what they rec, they requested that to say.
They they, we, um, you know, we just need not, we need to recognize, A, that that's completely in their domain, but there there's certainly some impact that that flows from that, so we need to, we want to be conscious of that.
So two questions, on number four, which is encourage the redevelopment of Bus Depot on Eastern Turnpike near the former GE, now Sacred Heart. By redevelopment, that's where we're talking about like a little commercial corner, I I'm still confused about where that is. And also, I have two suggestions, instead of saying encourage, perhaps we should study it. Uh, because I think we have to look at environmental, I remember when we did the ice, is that near the ice skating rink?
It's, there used to be a GBT bus turnaround there with GE.
Front of, on on Ford Hill Road right there?
You're coming down the hill, there's a, on both sides of the street, there's a, it looks like a, it looks like a cul-de-sac that has Eastern Turnpike running through the middle of it.
It's in the corporate park, but it's adjacent to the both sides.
It's on both sides of.
Entrance to GE.
Before you reach the light on Eastern Turnpike.
Correct.
It's there because they needed a spot for the, for the.
And there's no houses right near there.
Uh, there's a.
Half of it, it puts the old GE site and the other half is kind of near Struffield Falls kind of, correct?
The the condo development?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I I.
Explore instead of encourage, I think is fine, and I think we've said that in the past, that.
I would rather just say consider and also add to it other regions that we were just talking about. Like Stratfield, Tux's Hill, King's Highway.
Well, I think that kind of gets encapsulated in the bullet before that.
And, uh, certain areas and perhaps including these areas, like why limit ourselves to just that area?
Just cuz of the bus depot.
It's a specific spot.
Yeah, I think they were just talking about the bus, um, one before, now we've kind of expanded outside of, well, to really be all Fairfield potentially, oh, actually, the, number three in our new one we've just added as well, so.
That was good.
Oh, sorry, thank you, yes, Commissioner Corso.
I I was just gonna say to Commissioner, Commissioner Brown's point, I mean, I think, I think it needs to be in there. If you, if there's, if there's not consensus that it needs to be developed up, I mean, it needs there, then maybe change the, change a word if needed, but it's, it's a negative on the town right now. It needs to be something. Um, so I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider, I mean, I would, I think it needs to be encouraged, something, not just consider. You could consider what it gets developed as, but I think if we're, I think this is just saying, encourage redevelopment. But I think if we're, I think this is just saying encourage redevelopment of it. This is not prescribing a specific use to it. So I think that's where you could get into a discussion of what's appropriate there.
But by negative on the town, what is that? What do you mean by that exactly?
It's, it's, it's asphalt right now.
I gotta, I gotta figure out where that is.
I'm just.
I mean, we've always been saying explore, consider. I mean, I, you know, that's just kind of the theme we've been doing. So I mean, certainly want to always encourage development, but I just. It is asphalt.
What do we, do you need to buy a bus depot? Are we talking about like a dwelling type of thing?
Well, no, I know it. So.
That's just, just, just to, to, to pinpoint the location. We're not suggesting put a bus depot there. We're referring to that as a bus. Maybe we should call it the bus turnaround.
The bus turnaround. Okay. But I, but I think, I think this speaks to, you know, we always get a lot of comments about traffic and it's because we only have very specific, very few commercial areas for people to go get their groceries, to go get a sandwich, to do all these different things. And adding these little pocket commercial areas would probably be beneficial to the university, be beneficial.
New ice skating rink, I mean, I'm sure it'd be a great opportunity.
Can you get my coffee there?
But, but right, it would be beneficial to the folks who live in that area of town and not have to drive all the way down somewhere else to get a bayou or to do all these different things. So it's just, it just opens it up in a very obvious.
Right. And there's no bus that.
Now that's underutilized.
No bus that currently goes there, right?
Yeah. I think it's got a chain. Doesn't it have a chain on the.
You can do a turnaround there.
Yeah.
That was.
There wasn't a chain though.
The bus stop there, that's weird.
The bus route there was only there to service the Chee corporate.
Right, exactly.
I like the word explore better, but other than that, I think it's a great idea to explore.
If we did, let's just think about the bus depot, that would go like on the Bridgeport line or whatever the, sorry, I apologize. I don't know the proper name. Rapid bus would we have?
No, no, you're, you're, we're not talking about enhancing bus opportunity. We're referring to that location as a former post turnout. And so what the suggestion is, is to take that area that is no longer used for that and consider perhaps making that a pocket retail location.
Okay.
You make, he heard the redevelopment of the former bus turnaround.
Yeah, we're making it sound like there's a.
I was thinking of the re, okay.
Yeah, we need to, we.
Is that, how far out away from the Merritt Parkway is that? Like 100 yards?
Right off.
I can.
Right there. You get off exit 46, you go up Sport Hill Road.
And. 100 yards from the.
You'll see the entrance to what is now the entrance to Sacred Heart, West Campus. And you go up the road and there's that little place where I can pull over and answer a phone call.
Yep.
Which was formerly, formerly on the right side of the road, probably the a bus.
Bus turnaround.
Bus depot.
So my.
What it is.
So two concerns, making sure there's no sensitive environmental areas and also that we don't further degrade the Merritt Parkway as a historic asset. So I, you know.
You can't see it.
Has no impact on the Merritt Parkway whatsoever.
I mean, in any application would be subject.
Talking about small scale, little things.
Yeah, in any application would be subject to review. Maybe we're wrong, but I would agree that I can't imagine it has an impact, but.
I'm just thinking about the Sacred Heart University campus, like those kids probably have to go downtown or Black Rock Turnpike to see, you know, go to a restaurant or what have you. So I think this would be nice. But there's no diner.
On campus.
Here's a diner.
And on their campus.
There's on campus, but yeah, true. But I think that closes early, early. It's not, it's not like a two way out type of diner.
I don't know that for certain. It's good, it's very good. You're probably right. Probably by give it a try. Okay.
So we, we also, we skipped number five, which was explore the possibility of leveraging brownfield funding to support redevelopment along King's Highway. So I think Kathy, that speaks to your concerns about King's Highway too. There is that big parcel that kind of needs to be cleaned up.
Town dealer.
Yeah.
I, I don't, it's, it's only.
That's a brownfield.
Because it's, it was used for cars, right? I mean.
PCBs. It was a field, it was.
Nissan, I, who owns it? Nissan? I mean, just, okay, but could that ever be used as like affordable housing or something like that?
Good. It's gotta be.
It should be on stilts because of the flood zone.
Flood sign. There was a proposal that was approved for redevelopment of a mixed use project there, but it never, never went forward.
Couldn't have anything on the ground. You could have commercial on the ground floor in a flood zone.
It was elevated up. It was, it was parking under.
Okay.
It's, it's, King's Highway is substantially higher than the grade of this site. It was going to be parking below.
So you could walk on the level to get into.
And it would be from, from, it would be a story above the existing slab. But it would be at the King's Highway elevation because there's a substantial grade difference there.
That seems like it should be a high priority. That's been an ISR for a long time.
Yeah, there's a lot of cost to that remediation. That's why it hasn't moved forward.
State has.
Parcel by.
Also a brownfield.
The piece of the.
Party.
Indian Harmon.
We include that as the impression lady suggesting.
She talking about that, that.
Well, that's, that's included along King's Highway. I think, I think that would be.
As long as it's included, that's fair.
Indian Harmon.
Okay. So going back to strategy B, encourage development in existing commercial areas. So again, this speaks to the design commercial district and the center design business district. Some of this is a little bit repetitive based on the prior chapter that speaks to housing. But it also to kind of make similar changes to the design commercial district where we get rid of that 50% maximum residential floor area in lieu of better design standards for the ground floor and better design standards for the massing of the building overall.
I would just say in number one, after the intro, you say, consider the following, just to follow.
Instead of eliminate is.
Yep.
That way you can keep the rest of it, but consider the following.
Got it.
Kind of following our theme.
I'm sorry, I don't see where the design standards are here.
So.
Go ahead.
The second bullet point, residential on the condition that's not within 50 feet of the front or side setback. So what we're trying to do is get rid of that limitation. I mean, get rid of that setback because I think even in the design commercial district for King's Highway, for example, the historic fabric that you have is right on the sidewalk. That's what makes that neighborhood walkable. Right now in the design commercial district, there is a minimum 25 foot front yard setback, but we want those buildings closer to the street. So it's, it's, I think it's, it's a, it's similar to what I think Tom and Jeff were talking about in terms of wanting to really kind of create a more intimate relationship to the sidewalk where you have maybe a maximum setback instead of a minimum setback. And very specific guidelines for what needs to be in that front yard setback so that you don't end up with cars or parking and all of that stuff has to be behind the building. And that's the way King's Highway is now for the most part, for the older businesses that are there. So we would just be trying to revise our regulations currently to be able to allow for more of that redevelopment to happen in the same walkable type of commercial that's there today.
So the difference between bullet, the second bullet and the third bullet, I'm trying to comprehend that. In all other instances, the ground floor has to be commercial or any of the non-residential permitted, but you would permit ground floor residential in any downtown or in any DCD on the condition it's not within 50, so that not within 50 feet would be eliminated.
So if you wanted to do it on the ground floor, but that ground floor in the first 50 feet has to be commercial so that it's the pedestrian serving business. If you have deeper lots that after the first 50 feet, you can do residential behind that.
Oh, oh, so that stays in there?
I'm sorry. Yeah, that does. I'm sorry.
So what comes out then?
I think we need to add that other bullet for maximum setback. I scanned it really quickly. I apologize.
The 15 foot.
Crucial amount of commercial space separates.
Downtown.
Residential.
Yep. But I think we had to kind of discuss the same, whether we want similar standards in this district also for the DCD.
The other, I know, I don't see Tom there, but he had a, an emphasis on the his most recent comments is to be more specific about Black Rock Turnpike and make that a, I think this might be the place for that is to to implement strategies, I'm looking at his, implement strategies, reimagining Black Rock Turnpike as a more welcoming, walkable pedestrian friendly corridor is more conducive to the kind of mixed use development we're trying to promote. On commercial corridors, again, with along the line of a maximum setback to get the buildings up closer to the street, parking behind it. We talked a little bit about this last time. And, and Tom offered in his comments of the other day to, and I think this would be the appropriate place to insert such a strategy if there's consensus that that's something you'd want to.
Read it again, please.
His, uh, strategies to reimagine Black Rock Turnpike as a more welcoming, walkable pedestrian.
No, that's okay. I hear, I saw him.
No, he's there. I just.
Yeah, it's basically Tom reimagining the Black Rock Turnpike corridor in, in, along with similar design requirements to require maximum setback to kind of create a more pedestrian friendly environment. My suggestion is that this would be under strategy B would be the appropriate place for that. If there's consensus, that's something the commission wants to pursue.
Yeah, I mean, except, I mean, just, I would wordsmith it, just take out reimagine and find another word for it. But I mean, I, the point is, I think the concept is.
Redevelop, I don't know.
Well, whatever the concept, I mean, whatever it is.
And I think.
Good with that?
Okay. It's, it's, it's talking kind of like, hey, let's reimagine.
Well, I mean, maybe that is.
Would that play out then, changing the.
Well, you'd have a maximum setback instead of a minimum setback. It would encourage.
That could take place like.
So if, if. All right, let's say that.
Shaw's Mark, is it Shaw's? No, Shoprite.
Say the Shoprite Plaza is going to be completely redeveloped. I mean, this is long-term. I mean, there, there's long-term leases there, but just say for, for the example, probably the better. So they're going to redevelop that. So rather than having all that parking in front, you'd want the building closer to the road. Have it more street engaging. So you're more likely to want to walk there and have parking behind it rather than dominating the visual landscape.
And with other design standards for the appearance of the building.
Yes, yes. So that's, that's kind of what's all baked into that. Is there a consensus amongst, I think there is that.
Well, that's my question. Is that, is that concept in the post road as well?
And.
Well, is there, I mean. Consensus on that?
Would that work with such a, like I've, I've been in Wilton recently quite a bit and you know how they have that river road and then they have that shopping plaza that's kind of like off the road, but you can walk all around in it. It's very attractive. But it's, it's a very large place with a lot of stores, like it might be something like that.
Which market area is that where you're talking? Yeah, it is nice.
But it's, I don't know, like if a huge area like where Shaw, where Shoprite is would could just move all those things up to the road. Like there might be another way of imagining it that would be equally attractive, but.
Well, the, I think the idea of reimagining it means let's study it and my last set of notes and we'll continue here, me beating the drum about form-based code, but the idea is to, let's think about how we can reuse this. So it's more efficient because right now we've got a lot of asphalt and those parking lots are pretty full over there, but you know, you, we can build a garage or allow a garage to be built. We could go vertical. There's a lot of different possibilities. I'm not suggesting anything specifically now, but reimagining it to be something that's more pedestrian oriented, I think is where Tom, Tom's suggesting.
Yeah. Cause I, when I think of the Wilton thing, people walk there a lot. It's very.
They have form-based code there, by the way. Just gonna continue banging that drum.
As long as we get public hearings.
Not foreign, but form.
Yes.
I agree. I.
As long as you get public hearings.
And I agree that Black Rock turn is completely unwalkable.
But I think that.
Is there a way, way of, well, actually Tom, of course. Commissioner Corso, it's his adder, but I mean, is there a way of broadening that a little bit? So it's not only like to have the short setback, it might not really work to make it look like downtown. It might work the other way. This is attractive.
It's more specific.
I don't remember what it said, what.
I would say, I would say, my suggestion would be that there is a recommendation along the, along the lines of, of of what I, what I have written that, which I think is really more broad and conceptual and doesn't address, make specific recommendations about setbacks. I mean, I think there are some more specific recommendations that can be separate or, or tiered underneath those or whatever that deal with the implementation of it. I think the concept that, that it sounds like there's some consensus on is to make Black Rock Turnpike more walkable, pedestrian friendly, et cetera. And then how, how that happens, I think there are, there are different ways. Maybe there are stretches of it, if not the entire thing where you eliminate the setback entirely. Maybe, maybe you eliminate the, or have a maximum setback along the entire place, but there are pockets where there may be plazas or other things to break. I mean, there are, there are lots and lots of, of things that you could do. So you have some variety, but I think maybe there's, there's a broad recommendation that deals with the concept and then specific ones that deal with implementation.
Well, I mean, is there, it sounds like there's consensus for the broad concept. Is that accurate? I see shakes the head. Okay. We got that much. Commissioner Levy. Yeah, I do even like to not just limit it to Black Rock Turnpike, but let's say the post road from the, you know, library or all the way up to that Bob's, what used to be Bob's Shopping Center. Well, we've been saying, we've been, we've been saying extending the DCD in that area of post road. That's been the, that's been the proposed recommendation so far. So is it makes sense to just?
I mean, CBGB.
I say.
I think it's a different matter. You mean centered.
CBGB. If I understand, that's encompassed in the recommendation to consider expanding the center design business district eastward. In addition, to encompass those design.
Well, Commissioner Levy is suggesting taking this current recommendation that's at least right now, just for Black Rock, you know, cooperating in the post road. My thought would be keeping on Black Rock for now because we've been talking about extending the CDC down to the post road. And that may be, keeping that delineation might make sense in this instance.
Well, yeah.
Again, that's proposed recommendation on the.
I think they're.
Extending the CDC. We still have to talk about that. But.
Commissioner Levy.
Yeah.
I want to move the buildings forward. Oh, I get, I get you. Yeah.
I don't care how we do it.
Uh, I mean, it's.
Reimagining is pretty vague, like it.
That's what, yeah, I think that was the idea behind. I don't think he had any thoughts beyond.
But I think that's where, when we get into the zoning regulation decision, we can talk about all of that. And I, and I do think again, when we get to reorganizing the zoning regs, which is our next step, which could happen at any time. That's where you really have that comparison table where it's organized a little bit differently and you can see the differences between each of the, each of the zones right now.
We can, we can lead that in rather than, it can be something about emphasize zoning regulation changes that promote those characteristics. I don't want to read the whole thing yet, but reimagining, you know, have it be, you know, consider zoning regulation changes that promote welcoming, walkable pedestrian friendly quarter.
No, they'll leave it like that then. They don't have it just for the Black Rock for that. I mean, that's a, that's a fair thing. If it, if it over, if it's maybe too strong a word, but if it's like the Venn diagram that overlaps, then so be it.
Yeah, but I also, well, I guess would it only be a plug, like not all post road has, I don't think every store has parking, right?
You're right now in the center?
Yeah. Business, there's a park on the road. I mean, I know there are some gar, there's garage or two, back parking lots.
Yeah, that's true.
Do we have?
About that, if it's pre-existing.
In that description.
Well, but, but I think, but I think what you'd end up seeing is you would leave room for a driveway, but the rest of the building would need to be, is, is that your concern? Am I understanding?
I'm just, I'm just, I don't know. I, I guess I'm just a little afraid of just having blanket same kind of policies all around town. I agree that Black Rock Turnpike is definitely right for that. I'm not so certain about post road.
Well, sorry, not the areas that the buildings are already up. I guess the question is going, and we, going outside of that. I mean, if that's a separate, we can talk about that now if you want. That's always been on the periphery that we've discussed in the past. And I thought there was consensus, but maybe there's not about extending the CDC out.
CBDB, CB, center district.
Center design district is the post, is the downtown, right?
Yeah, CBs.
CDC.
CDD.
CDC is any, any.
Sorry, CDD. Okay, it's fine. I'm just, I want to say it right.
What you meant. I knew what you meant.
Still, I gotta say it right. CDD outward.
Where's that referenced? Well, it's referenced in strategy A, bullets two. Do we, I guess, do, do we have consensus to extend the center design district, both east and west?
No, it's okay. Let me, because I've been doing. No, it's okay. Let me, cause I've been doing it. It's the center design business district. Yeah, I'm sorry. So let's, um. We thought about that now. Okay.
So when, when we talked about this in the past, there was, again, we softened it up to be a, a, a less declarative statement. To say now, consider extending rather than extend. Um, and there was some discussion about doing that for several reasons to help bring those walkable. The, the design criteria that are in the center that help promote walkable commercial areas. To expand that, that geography. That's where that comes from.
I thought we talked about that last year, towards the end of the year and last time a little bit. I mean, I like, I like the language as is, just the consider and, um, the concept of doing, uh, what it says, but. Thoughts?
Go ahead, Commissioner Randolph. C D, we, we talked about this in November. We talked about bifurcating the discussion. Because part of the discussion is relaxing everything in the current footprint of the center district. To allow more height. And that would include relaxing parking, relaxing far floor area ratio. And that would enable buildings up to fifty two feet tall. And you might get more then, because when you relax those, you, depending on the characteristics of each parcel, you'll get more. So I have actually a problem with that because I'm looking at the community theater. And one big reason people didn't like fifteen Unqua Road was it would dwarf the community theater. You know, so we're showing the community theater as like the icon of our town. That would just look like a little thing and some, what is that? Twenty five feet tall or?
Six story building.
Community theaters?
No, the one you're comparing it to.
I mean, that was, well.
Right, talking about.
Even fifty two feet would be around twice as high as.
It would be four stories. So what we're, what we're hoping to do, what the T O D plan recommendation was. Right now in the center design business district, it's five stories, fifty feet.
But they can't get there because of the other requirements for parking and floor area ratio restrictions.
Well, because realistically, what folks want to do is there is less of a demand for. Office, office rentals above the first floor. That there's just less of a demand. You're seeing it in Brick Walk. A lot of their offices on the second floor have converted to apartments. Um, so in order to get to a viable building, the F I R has to change as well as the residential proportionality. So those are two of the regulations that we're looking at. The ground floor, we also want that to be a viable ground floor for a multiple different types of uses. And so what we've realized in discussion about ground floor commercial is original ground floor commercials might have been ten, ten foot floor plates. These days you really need fifteen feet for, uh, example, for like, um, even. Uh, wireless infrastructure for like ceiling height to be able to run wires and cables and infrastructure and all those different things. You just need a, a taller ground floor. So we were going from five stories, fifty feet. Four stories, fifty two feet, and that two feet's really going to be a negligible.
Except that we don't have anything that's fifty feet. Is there anything downtown?
Yes, we do.
Forty Sherman Street.
That's not in downtown.
Wedding cake.
That's not downtown either. And those are not in the, the center that people look at and they like the sort of small town feel. I think, I, I do not feel a lot of people want to see fifty two foot tall buildings side by side all around the downtown. And then stretching that all the way down to Mill River is a whole separate question. So I'm against both of those. And I, I would like to, um, have some renderings of what that would look like. I think a lot of people, you're looking at light.
Hold on, hold on.
Sun, air, you know, a small town feel. And, and that was in the T O D too. They said, they didn't, they did not recommend, I don't think fifty two. I think they recommended a much smaller scale than in the metro center area, as I recall. They said, you know, be careful of the downtown ambiance and, you know, it's the emotional center of the town. And should be of a much smaller scale. So that's what I'm thinking of, you know.
Tom, go ahead.
I'll, I'll be quick on this one. I'm, I'm strongly and unequivocally, uh, in favor of, of expanding. The C B, C D B, the whatever it is, uh, both east and west. At least as far east as, uh, South Benson Road. I think we're, I think we may have been talking about, uh, I, I forget where the, the border that we had been talking about, uh, westward. But, but in both directions.
How about though, the, um, the, the other, um, suggestions of our T O D plan? Which is, you know, that Smith, this arrogant was arrogant, uh, was referencing.
The, you, you mean the, uh, the. Cap and all that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I, I thought we had consensus on that last time, so I'm in favor of all those things too.
That's fine. Just want to be clear on it.
Yeah.
They're leaving.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's just, uh, relooking, uh, at our zoning regulations for the business districts. I mean, right now I'm looking at it, they have a minimum width of frontage of twenty, thirty, twenty feet. Whereas in fact, that might be the maximum. We want to reconsider that. And also the, you know, it might be five stories. It might, we, we want to consider getting it to four story. In the center design district, uh, you know, so it's just examining our, you know, just re, uh. Uh, reworking our zoning regulations for the business districts to promote, uh, maximum setbacks. And, uh, appropriate.
Yes, the question on the height is, is again, it anticipated limiting to four. With the idea that above the third floor, there would need to be either some articulated setback at that level. Or in combination with the lower articulation in the facade plane. So it's not one massive monolithic structure. So that's, that's built into the prior recommendation that above the third floor level, you'd have to push back that. To some degree, that fourth floor, but four is the absolute cap.
Commissioner Randolph, do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Sorry, wasn't sure.
Okay, so I, I think this is an excellent conversation. And Commissioner Braun, I think your concerns are, are sound that we don't know what this is going to look like. The recommendations that are important is that we need to, uh, evaluate this. And we need to evaluate it thoroughly because right now our zoning regulations are very fragmented. And that's why our commercial districts look so eclectic, because it's just a patchwork of, of different ideas and thoughts. If we can look at the commercial district more comprehensively, I think we could probably go, you know, we should study going higher. Setback may or may not be, but we need to study these things and see what they actually look like. Um, rather than trying to make a decision in a vacuum without, you know, just.
I agree with you and I'd like to see some, we, we had some really good renderings at one point when we were going through some of these things.
And the recommend, the recommendation I think is, is prudent to say, we're going to study these things. There is a consensus to extend the business districts. Uh, there's a consensus I heard earlier that we need to include Black Rock. Um, we may even consider other parts of town, maybe Tuxes, um, as areas to, to include in a study. But that's, we, we talked about sewers earlier. These areas are served by sewers. It's going to minimize the impact. We're going to have grand list growth. We're going to have housing growth. We're going to accomplish many of our goals by increasing mixed use density. And I think my only ask, I'm not sure if we've had mixed use included in, in, um, those descriptions. But I would, uh, request that that be added.
Yeah, the presumption is what we're talking about is, is changing the mix. Right now the mix is limited to fifty percent residential. We're talking about allowing greater than fifty percent residential presuming.
I love that.
Commissioner Harrison.
The height is what concerns me and, um, the canyon effect that you would get turning us, you know, into looking like South Norwalk. Instead of like, you know, a small, like a town. And, um, also, what will be the difference between center design business district and E C D? It will, it looks like it's all going to be the same.
It's the, well, it goes back to what Emma Lynn was describing before. If you take it in context of what the regulations permit. There's a use matrix that, that, that some, for example, um, drive-throughs and certain other things. We talked about gas stations last time is whether or not you want, where you want those. It's where, uh, uh, it's, it's the permitted uses. The, the center design district is more, we want foot traffic on the first floor. And on, we don't permit drive through restaurants, for example, in the center design district. And design commercial district is a more general district.
I, and I, I think that's great. I just, is there a way of having maybe another name of a district or something? So that we can do a step down from the center design district to the other stretch of what, a mile or so that goes down to Mill River? Cause you've got a whole different situation there. You've got houses much closer to the post road that can't get out. You've got traffic issues. We've never had a traffic study. You've got environmental issues down by Mill River. That's supposed to be part of a greenway. That has never been restored. And, um, you know, is there a way of, of doing the design standards? Um, without imposing so much density right there.
Well, I think that goes back to what Jeff was just saying. We're, we're, again, what, what this recommendation is, is to consider it. That doesn't make it so. There are other steps that would have to follow in order to implement that. Including the, the, you know, the visual impact that.
It's the height. So the height fifty two foot tall.
You're, you're got the, we're going to see that.
That would be part of the, the implementation phase is what you ultimately could implement. But for now, you're just talking about considering doing that. That doesn't, that doesn't flip the switch in, in, in.
And then in part of all other. No, no, Commissioner Harrison was waiting. Yeah, that's right.
No, I, I just echo some of your concerns just about, um, we have the environmental issues going down towards the Mill River as well. It's just traffic. I mean, I know respectfully, you know, you said it probably wouldn't cause much traffic. But I think we need to have more of a holistic study to see how it would impact traffic. I know people who live on Bungalow Street, Beaumont Street, off Sasko Hill, they, they have a lot of traffic issues. They've called me. They, I mean, they've told me about it. It's real. I just fear that this could just hurt. It would just impact the town in a negative way. Um, I like the residential area on top. I think that would be great, but I'm also concerned it would not be really attainable housing for a lot of people. It would probably be very expensive. So, I mean, it's a good thing, but I, I just don't think it's going to help our issues when it comes to affordability.
With the affordability.
I just know, I know a lot, some of those apartments do, they're over, you know, twenty five hundred dollars in some cases for small apartments above stores.
I, I don't think that we're going to move the needle on price until we have more product. Um, I think that that's a, that's a real specific relationship between an undersupply based on the price. And that's statewide, right?
I understand that.
It's, it's glow, yeah, it's global, it's national, it's, it's international.
You know, we talked about missing middle and fixing that issue, but.
Yeah.
Middle's not necessarily going to be cheaper. It's not going to be attainable for lots.
No, it's not in the short run, that's for sure. I mean.
We're going to be in Fairfield County. Our land, our land is so expensive here. I don't, I don't think that's going to change drastically.
But I think that folks need more housing choice within our community. We're hearing it from seniors. We're hearing it from young folks who want to stay in town. We have a university.
Well, the twenty five girl can afford three thousand dollars a month in rent.
They're not going to afford it by themselves. They're going to have roommates probably is what's, what it's going to boil down to.
Yeah.
But, but they also can't afford a house. So we, we have to, we have to give, we have to provide choices, I think. It's, it, you know, it's, it's just, um.
Have to, I mean, we should. I don't know if we have to, but we should.
Well, listen, the idea, well, the idea is.
We think people can disagree. I.
But I, and right now it's consider, I mean, which is not, again, point being that we're considering and exploring it. Um, I mean, what part of it is also, I wouldn't, you know, regardless of what, I like it as is. I like the recommendations as they are right now. One of the special reasons I would want to keep them in there is Republican. So the public can review this, see what it is. And we can, I mean, obviously, as we said, consensus now doesn't mean a vote in favor. Or, you know, denial, whatever it is later. But even if we just keep the recommendations in for now for public input, I think is valuable. I mean, I, I think the, I, I would like it as is right now. Um, obviously, even if somebody agrees with me or disagrees with me, they can always change your later. But even if we kept it in now, public input, I think that there's value in that.
I agree. I think this is what I am. I'd like to hear from.
Yeah, the only thing that I would want to add to is that, you know, keep in mind. You know, if we were to go down the path of saying, well, commercial property owners, you can only have three stories of development. That is radically going to affect how those properties are valued and what that does to our grand list. So that is something that we have to think about in terms of, you know, I think. I, I mean, I, I have to tell you, I, I drive up, when, when you go to Vermont or the Adirondacks, those village centers, they all have four stories. Old hotels, they have five and, and five. You have sixty two thousand people.
Yeah.
Um, it's not, it's not, in terms of our scale, it's, it's because we have, we don't have really viable redevelopment regulations. For folks that, and, and we have long-term commercial property owners, that those buildings stay the same. There will be a period where they are going to be ripe based on their age for redevelopment. And I think we need to provide the opportunities for those commercial property owners to redevelop. Um, we allow, you know, four stories in some of our single family residential zones. I, I, I just don't think that from an equity perspective for commercial property owners, that we can really kind of limit it and scale it back. To like two or three stories. I, I don't think that that's a viable economic corridor.
It's a, I, I think the, it's good to keep an open mind on these things and study it and see what it actually looks like. I know that it's different than what we have, but we mentioned Brattleboro. It, one, have you been there, Brattleboro?
I've not.
Yeah.
I've just been there.
I've been.
In one, in one, in one is like the best, the best small town, most livable small town. And it's got five story buildings in it. And it's not a, it's not.
These stories, I mean, as many storefronts as we have.
It's got more, way more, way more.
My biggest concern is, yeah, I mean, if we're going to expand like that, there should be some sort of architectural design requirement. I don't want to have some Lego building going up just to cover. I mean, it really ruins the New England feel of itself.
Well, let me ask you this. Can we, just because this isn't going to be the last time we discuss it, but can we? Is there a consensus of leaving the rec, leaving the recommendation as is for now, at the very least for public input?
Yes, for me, yes.
I mean, for me, I think so too.
I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Again, we're not wedded to this, A, because we'll talk about it after public input or even before or during or whatever the case may be. But even the more important thing is, even if we accepted this today as is, regulation amendment starts to come before us. We still have an opportunity to review the specifics at that point.
Um, I do think we should add something about architectural design standards. I didn't see that anywhere.
Well, that's in an earlier one, isn't it?
I looked up the word architect. I didn't see it. I don't think I saw it at all.
If you want to put the language in there, I'm not going to be able.
So, so part of, we have architectural standards within the center design district.
Currently.
Currently. And so that's why when we were looking to remove that east and west, we wanted to, that those standards go with it.
Might need to be revamped though, no?
Yes, I agree.
Yes, so maybe that could be in here, you know, that will consider reviewing our architectural design standards in light of. And, um, also I, I really do strenuously oppose allowing residential on the, anything industrial. Because that exposes us to eight, and I understand what you said last time. It exposes us to eight dash thirty G. We don't need any more of that exposure.
But I mean, we're not, that's, I think, I get your point and I'm not.
Well, sending it to Mill River includes the X side property.
It's considered though. I mean, that's the, I mean, just. I don't think we need to say anything more than what we have here unless somebody just, I mean, I, I would leave it as is. I don't think we need to highlight it. Consideration and should it ever come up, well, it will be a consideration.
Okay.
Um. The architectural thing could probably be added.
Okay, so we, so we also, you know, this has come up before, but we are, uh, recommending that we look at our parking requirements. Uh, we do have areas that are significantly overparked, um, and so we do need to look at those.
E three, okay.
So that's three and four. Um, and then also five, we do have, uh, in our zoning map, we have split residential and commercial. Zones on singular parcels. Um, and so we do need to add that to our to-do list to look to update that zoning map moving forward. Um, Economic Development Commission has asked that we also review the zoning map to examine opportunities to widen the commercial corridor along King's Highway as well. Um, to make that more viable, a more viable place for, uh, redevelopment. So if we can.
Question about that?
Yeah.
But, um, what, what does that mean, uh, widen the corridor?
It means now if you look at the zoning map, it's kind of a sawtooth, one property deep. Yeah, uh, the, the, the commercial zone depth off of King's Highway is no more than one property. So the question they raised was, is are there opportunities to, to make widen that, meaning more than one property deep? If that could foster the aggregation of properties to, to get. If that could foster the aggregation of properties to, to get meaningful reinvestment in that corridor, that stretch that I think people would agree could, could use some reinvestment.
Especially on the south side of the street where it backs up to the highway.
That, that's fine. I had a feeling that's what it meant. Just wanted to make sure we weren't talking about physically widening.
Road, no.
No, we're not talking about widening the road. We're talking about widening the district boundary.
All right, good. Thanks.
It, it's, this is a little bit specific, but um, does it, does the zoning here, if your, if your property is more than 51% of a specific zone and you, uh, and you share another zone and you re, re, uh, or subdivided those properties, does the zoning of the larger parcel carry to the parcel that you re-sub, that you reverse subdivided? I don't know what you mean by reverse subdivide, but, but if you've got to split something. If you merge two parcels and the new part of the merged parcel has, um, is less than, is, is less than 50%, does the zoning of the 51% parcel carry? Okay. The zone line, the zone line would have to move. Might we consider that? Cause it's, I've seen that elsewhere. Well, that's what we're, I think, recommending is to examine where, where the present line is bifurcating properties. And should the zone line be coincident with the property line? Cause a lot of the lines when they were originally drawn were just a set distance off of the right of way, which in some cases bifurcates properties. So should it be all in or all out? Uh, but to get to your other, in a residential zone that's split, the rules are the, the, the zone of the more requires the greater lot size prevail. You can use the lot area from a lesser zone to satisfy the requirement of a bigger zone, but not the other way around. On a commercial split zone, you can only do the, the commercial only applies to the commercially zoned portion of property. Your residentially zoned portion, if it's split between residential, commercial, it's, it's wherever the line is, the line is. So that's why that, you know, we have the number of properties that are split. As they head along by saying that it's 51%. You can then.
I'm having trouble hearing.
In other places you could, if the property is 51% of a specific, if it's 51% of commercial and then you, that's residential, you can, you can call it commercial.
Correct. You, that, that.
Well, that's, that's, that's one option.
Was that like the divorce situation where, um, didn't we recently combine, do something near divorce, where divorce bakery used to be? Where it was part residential, part commercial?
There was a proposal some years ago to change the zone to allow the expansion of the parking lot. It would have required a zone change from residential to commercial.
Did we do that or?
It was rejected.
Do we change the whole thing into residential then? Something happened.
The zone line didn't move.
Oh. But so if we, let, let's, so let's, so we do that now, right? That would be an example of where we would want to move the zone line now to make that parcel not be split anymore.
Yes.
Maybe.
So how does that affect that owner? Will, will we make it all commercial or all residential? Like, how do you make that decision?
Well, uh, it goes back to the premise that, that this, if it's majority commercial, I would think that you'd want to make it completely commercial. If it's majority residential, maybe you move the line so it's completely residential. But that's, we'd have to examine the map to see, it may not be a uniform application of that recommendation. Maybe some cases we might want to expand to commercial or vice versa.
So, okay.
What we're saying here is, is, is we shouldn't have split zone properties. We ought to consider making them, when we look at the map as a whole, fixing that so they're one or the other.
I kind of like this spot on issue.
Right.
I'm thinking of how it would have.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good example. That's, that's a property that's, that the, the, the zone line is 200 feet parallel to the post road and that property is more than 200 feet deep. The rear of that property is commercially zoned, but it has a longstanding variance to allow commercial parking, residentially zoned portion of property.
Um, so I'm just thinking, when, right now, when you change a zone as part of an application or there's the 500 foot rule. So 25% of the neighbors within 500 feet can file a protest petition and then that would require a super majority to approve it. This would eliminate that possibility, I guess, if we're trying to change a zone.
Well, if you change the zone, that.
Hope, you know, in other words, if somebody applied for that, that rule would apply.
It would also apply if you're proposing to do it.
If we change the zones.
If you're proposing to change, moving the boundary.
Oh, really?
That rule still applies.
Does? Sure. Okay.
We can't just change the zoning map? You can. You absolutely can.
They're saying though, that neighbors are within 500 feet object to it.
Yes.
Then we need a super majority.
25% of the neighbors.
It's, it's, there's a, there's a threshold petition requirement that requires the, the, the fifth vote instead of the fourth.
In that budget here, we're going to have to up our noticing for that because we have to list every single parcel where.
Pies regardless of whether it's the commission or the.
You know, it never occurred to me that it would apply if we just changed our zoning map. Yes. So we would have then have to send the notice drawing a 500 foot circle around the property. And if 25% of the owners of the, if owners of.
20% of the owner, it's 20% of the area of the land within 500.
The owners of 21% or 25%, yeah. They'd have to protest it. Yeah.
Well, they don't have to protest it, but if they do, it requires a threshold.
Okay. Oh, that's interesting. Okay.
Good. Can we move on?
Okay. So the next chapter is an interconnected community, which is about our road network, our bike and ped network, um, as well as our access to, uh, other places, employment, um, and other infrastructure. Um, so we do have, um, if we go to our blue pages, which starts on page 38, um, strategy includes, um, build a transportation network that supports the needs of all users. So this, um, continues the recommendations of the bike and ped master plan, uh, that were in the prior P O C D. Um, identify new safety standards, which is corner visibility standards that can be added to regulations that will advance complete streets. Um, develop a complete streets ordinance and design guide, which we hope will be funded in the fairly new, near, near future through a grant that's being applied for now. Um, coordinate, coordinate passive biking and walking opportunities with greenway identification. Um, pursue funding for a future study for possible micro mobility solutions. I think this has come up where people have kind of asked about, um, you know, kind of short, shorter, um, distance kind of trolley solutions through our, um, commercial corridors.
Is that what you mean by micro mobility?
Yes. Yeah, it can be. I mean, we, we had the, um, I don't know if you read this article, but we had had the scooters and that scooter program was not renewed in part because of the vendor issues. Um, but I think for some it was successful. For some, I think there were some issues because the vendor didn't make, you know, they didn't kind of live up to their portion of their agreement in terms of moving some of those scooters, et cetera. But this has come up with, um, bike share programs as well. So it's, it's a, it's a host of different options for that.
Micro mobility though, just like.
Or distance.
Or, um, power, uh, our vehicles.
They're small, like lightweight vehicles.
But not like, is this just like a bike or, or?
It could be, it could be bike. It could be scooters.
Oh, it can be. Okay.
Like a trolley.
We, um, sorry.
Yeah, I think just one question then to you. Develop, we need to update the third one. They ever, have they already by, done the street?
No, they're, they're playing for a grant now, which we hope that they'll get.
Well, they do. They might be able to strike out the word.
Okay.
Okay. That was, because we already, they already have the word.
Yeah.
Yeah, we referenced that back.
Yeah, I thought you did, but I just, that's where it was. Okay.
Yeah, back. I'm, I'm sorry. We did, we skipped some of the new red language, but on page 36.
Yeah, I thought I read it.
Talk about the, uh, that we had language that in 2018 that complete streets policy was adopted, then further clarified by the, we updated that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's fine. Commissioner Harrison.
Because in addition to, uh, micro mobility, could we add like a trolley or something like that?
I thought that, she said that was included in.
I guess, I think a micro, I think of like small, me, a trolley bus is not as.
It's usually, it's usually a micro mobility. That's what was confusing.
I just looked it up and it kind of said, it said small vehicle. So.
Yeah, it's like a trolley or a, so for, uh, well, it, let me think. The, my understanding is that's the broad term that's used for the, for.
I'll defer to that.
But, but like also too, I think there were like some communities that got grants recently where it was mic, it was micro mobility grant, grant. It was, it was, a lot of times they have like the senior dialer ride programs, but these other micro mobility programs were for anybody, not just seniors, where you could just call and for a, 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 a small fee, you could do point to point, um, outside of.
Who's the supplier?
It's, it's right now, it's like a, it's a pilot program through the state. So there were a couple of municipalities who got it.
It's like a, it's like a, for you, subsidized Uber.
Yeah, I figure. I was curious who the operator was.
Where would, where would the micro mobility be? Would it be like from, let's say, Stop and Shop down to the.
I think that's what the study would identify.
Well, it's not, it wouldn't be limited. This is wherever you think it could happen is, it's, it's not, uh, it could be, uh, up and down Blackwater Turnpike. So you don't have to move your car if you want to go to shop right to the gap and back.
It's going to identify those areas.
But, but it, it's not, we're not proposing to limit where that could be applicable.
Well, we, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Okay. So it could be in any corridor.
Tom, you're up next.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Go ahead. I'm just.
Just going to say, um, I imagine that would require parking at, at either end, right? People have to get to the trolley. Would that, how does that usually work? Do you envision like, um, having one of the private owners of big parking lots, like where Bob's is or Stop and Shop, that they rent out their parking lot for people who are going to.
I think, I think we might need to figure it out through the study.
Cause we don't have, you're not going to make a new parking lot.
So like, Kathy, like Westport, Westport has, um, a long established shuttle bus that goes to the train station. Yeah, they've had that for.
For years.
35 years. Well, I looked.
They have that now?
They've had it forever. And that, some places there's a parking lot, some places it just stops. So, um, that we, we need to study it, uh, and see if there's demand, because I know we've had jitneys come and go over the years. But we'd have to study it and see what, what works.
Didn't we have, didn't we have, you can, talking about the minibus? I lived in Westport.
Yeah.
The minibus? They don't really have.
60 years.
They don't have the minibus. They just have maybe one or two buses that do.
Yeah, they, but they have it.
They brought it back.
Like, I last, I mean, as, as of recently, I know they have it. They run the.
They have the minibus.
They run a bus, bus to the, to the train station unless they've terminated it with that.
Yeah, because when we was growing up young, you'd have the minibus system, which was great. That was, uh.
So that's, that's, that's like a micro mobility.
Yeah, that's definitely great.
Go ahead, Tom.
Um, so, uh, one, I just want to go on the record as saying that a trolley would be my dream. So fully, very, uh, very, uh, supportive of that. But just, um, just on, on a, my dream. Yeah.
Dream.
My dream. Uh, on a, on a minor technical note, I think, and, and I'm kind of a transit nerd. So like I, I love the micro mobility and all that, but I do think it's a bit jargony and confusing. So maybe worth replacing, um, with something, I don't know, like alternative transportation, something like that. Um, cause I think a lot of people are going to see micro mobility and have no idea what, what we're talking about.
They Google it.
I mean, is it worth putting?
They could Google it, but, but even I think even.
Sounds like a scooter.
I had to.
I mean, is it worth putting it here?
They could Google it, but I'm, I think it's probably inconsistent. You look at, at two different places and it, it may give you two different things. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't normally think of a, of a trolley as being part of micro mobility. Um, but, but some people do. So.
No, and we also.
We also say micro mobility in the bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure section. So maybe it's worth either, either, I mean, maybe not defining it, but just saying micro mobility includes, but is not limited to trolleys, bikes, scooters.
That, that works too.
Page 32.
We had like shared mobility programs too. Like when I lived in Seattle, we had, um, what was it called? Not defined, but it was like. Anyway, like a shared mobility program where if you don't need a car, you drive one for two hours and you need to go to Home Depot or something like that. I don't know if they still exist, but it might be interesting.
I think the first do exist somewhere. I just don't, I just don't see them.
I haven't seen them around here. I saw them in New York City.
They're, they're very popular in the city.
Back, back on.
About building more Q O D, maybe people would have need to go away for the weekend and they want to rent.
So, so page 32, to tie it back is where you could expand such, the, the such as language that's in page 32 to include other things, to expand the.
Scooters? But that says sco, scooters. That's micro mobility?
Well, that's.
What I'm saying is that we expanded to beyond that to include other things.
We, I think we should list some of them because scooters to me is not how you're going to get people off of a car.
Are you?
Yes. But I would wonder, I'm wondering if it's worth.
My neighbor takes one to the train.
Micro mobility somewhere else. So it's not just under bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. I mean, we can just put micro mobility such as, uh, because it says additionally, micro mobility programs and such as trolleys and other things to kind of show that micro mobility is more all encompassing. Um, at the very least, let's do that. Elsewhere, finding it or including it is fine too.
Is it trolley the same thing as like a mini, a bus, a small bus?
And bait.
It doesn't have like an apparatus that goes down the road. It's like a.
A streetcar? Those days, unfortunately, the roadies are gone. We, we, we used to have a streetcar. If you look back in the old, you know, for nickel, you could ride to downtown Bridgeport.
I'm not talking about that. No infrastructure, just like a vehicle.
We're not putting a rail. We're not putting a fixed rail.
So we're just talking about basically kind of like a bus.
A little short bus, a small.
You dress up a bus to look like a trolley.
Oh.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee, go ahead. It goes to a historical reference. What Peter's referring to was in the sixties and seventies, Westport had minibus that had scheduled routes all over town. It was probably for the kids that, you know, I'm looking at a New York Times article, minibus is a maxi success. And it lasted for about 10, 15 years. Unfortunately, they couldn't make them wheelchair accessible. And that was the end of the minibus program.
Right.
But it, uh, they were small buses. I've got a picture here of one that probably seated about 15, 20 people at most. They went all over town. So.
So that's very, that's, so if that's the only reason, so there was demand.
Yeah, Ellen, it was.
I never heard of it.
Oh, yeah.
Never heard of it.
Nearly 2 million riders have been, have been lured out of their cars and into this town's rapidly growing fleet of.
So is that, it seems to me like that's part and parcel of, um.
Oh, wait, that one is, oh, okay. So I had Commissioner Brown.
Okay.
It seems to me like the trolley thing is, isn't it a real parcel of reducing parking requirements and adding density? Like, that should be somewhat highlighted. You know, that's, that seems like, that would be necessary to even try to carry out this plan for added density in some of the parts that have traffic problems. You have to get people off the road. There's no, you can't be done. None of this added density can function, uh, the way it is now. And I was going to ask about the road diet. I can't find where it is. I thought it was in the complete streets area, but the road diet.
Strategy, strategy B.
Is there in the blue? Oh, we haven't gotten there yet.
Yep. Well, that's next. Okay. So we, okay, keep going?
Okay, Jim. I think we should encourage funding for the micro solution instead of just possibility of doing a, uh, that should be like a very important thing that we look into.
Let's, I mean, pursue funding. I mean, for a future study. I mean, who else, what, what else would you look for?
Well, just like we're saying, we should encourage other things. I think we should encourage that.
We want to encourage funding, but related to that, um, do we want to mention the universities as part of these small mobility, just because they already have their show.
They provide their own.
Yeah.
You know, I think this has been a, I, Jim can speak to this better, but I think we've, we've even asked the question like, would you guys entertain? And for liability reasons, they like to keep their students with their students and they don't really want to invite the general public to hop on their shuttles. Um, so we haven't really been able to coordinate. I mean, it would be something else. For example, if a town had our own program that then students could run, like, you know, in other parts of the country, even at UConn, you can, you know, take a free shuttle to Hartford, for example, that they run. Um, but you know, in other parts of the country where universities don't create their own shuttle system, they work with the local transit agency to provide free passes to get on those systems. You know, that could be something that's part of the study, but we just don't, I, I don't know that we could define that or recommend something specifically without kind of getting into economic viability, locations, hotspots for where these might be and attractive, you know, routes, et cetera. And so I think that's embedded in, just get that study going.
Thanks for.
Commissioner Brown, though, are you seeking it? Well, I mean, besides what's there and. Commissioner Brown, though, are you seeking it? Well, I mean, besides what's there and I guess
I have a question about bikes, but I can wait till we finish the
Yeah, but what's, what do you think? I mean, do you what are you thinking you
Of boarding? I would just say conduct a study or, um, for, um, like we're saying, up there says develop a complete streets ordinance. We should just do the study. I think that's absolutely necessary. There's
Sorry, the ordinance is done, so we're gonna strike out the ordinance.
We were gonna say develop it. So like
But with the design guideline, we're definitely, so that grant has already been applied for, for the design guide?
Where's that?
Number three?
Complete streets, yeah.
Yeah, the ordinance has already been completed, so we're behind schedule and the, that's already been done. So the design guide is
Funding for a future study for possible, there's too many like things there that say we don't really care. We've gotta be a way of just wording it where it's a little more firm.
Half the problem is though, we're looking for funding on something that, you know, you're asking for something, asking to do something that's outside of our
They would have to be vague on purpose, right?
I'm sorry?
Be a little vague on purpose to possibly get a grant or
Sometimes, sure. So are you suggesting you want to take out the words
Possible.
A future study or just a pursued funding for
Possible. I'll take out the word possible.
Okay, alright.
And then, um, on the bikes, we have two maps. Uh, well, one is a crash map and one is the, oh, there's two bike maps. There's a crash map and two bike maps. And I know that it's time to, are we trying to, I don't know what the bike plan is. I, I haven't seen it, but if this, this is the current network, is this different than the bike plan?
There, there is no network. There's a bunch of lines on a piece of paper.
Well, there's a network here. It says
That's not, there's nothing.
Well, okay. So I had a question for you then, Attorney, Attorney enough. So it's unsafe to, to ride your bike in that section of the post road that we're talking about.
It's unsafe to ride your bike on just about any road in this town.
Yeah.
On her ass.
But I do see that the bike path now goes on the old post road. Is the goal to move that to the post road? So people can I don't see how that can work.
What's your question?
I don't know what
I, I, I think the answer, this, this, this comes out of the bike pit.
Uh, yeah.
There's two, two, um, types of, of lines here. There's, there's solid lines and then there's parallel lines.
Are you talking about figure twenty-four or figure twenty?
Yeah, that, that, that comes out of the, um, the bike pit.
Crashes on the other, okay.
So the figure twenty-two is kind of the hot, hot spot for sort of hitler crashes. Figure twenty-three is bike, that crashes and twenty-four is the bicycle network is envisioned by the
See, I thought that was the current bike network. It says bike network. It doesn't say future.
Because, and I think including that in, in this P O C D allows for applying for grants for improvements. So if, for example, we identified one of those routes that's specified on the map for our bike pet plan, if they said, well, you know, this isn't working so well, we want to apply for a grant to improve this, to make it a delineated bike lane on this route, they could apply to do that because the map's included.
If you look, if you look on page thirty-six under bicycle network.
Okay.
It points to that. Figure twenty-four illustrates the proposed bicycle path. Part of the twenty-eighteen bicycle trajectory.
The Mill Plain Road was done. They put the stripes, they widened the side, but they didn't make it a bike lane because that would prohibit parking. So it's a bicycle path.
And, and just, you know, and so even as, as we've been looking at different roadways, um, this even allows D P W to say, okay, well, we're repainting the fog line. Let's move it in a little bit because we know it's part of the bike network. So you know how when you, when you drive on a road, sometimes there's a white line painted on the side?
Shoulder line.
A shoulder line.
What did you call it?
Fog line.
It's called a fog line. So if, so if, for example, right now that fog line is only the two foot wide to the curb, but they have room, it's say it's a wider than normal travel lane, like it's a thirteen or fourteen foot wide travel lane, they can actually move that fog line to tighten that travel lane and to give more room to the cyclist who's on the side if they identify it within the map, for example.
And do we know if that exists anywhere? Cause you know, Mill Plain Road.
Yeah, again, we're not, this, this is just carrying over their recommendations.
This is in the prior plan as well. So it's not
I don't understand the fact
We haven't really discussed
Parking spots or lanes. If, if you make it a dedicated bike lane, which is with the, um, striping, then you're prohibited from parking. If it's a shared bicycle route, then you can, you don't, parking is not prohibited in it.
So I, I, so on this figure twenty-four, there are shoulder bike routes and then there are shared lane bike routes. But the shoulder bike routes are I just said shore routes is Congress. I don't understand that. Um,
Shore route runs through.
They're all, they're all over the place, but
It's owned by the beach, right?
Shore route is the blue one.
Oh, that just needs to be
I, I know something's wrong with the
Yeah, that graphic needs to be adjusted. Thank you.
Okay, so, but, but again, this map shows bike routes that are marked right now for bike riding, right?
Yeah, shore and Congress don't belong.
Yeah, they should, yeah, they need a
Just to be clear, this is proposed and right now
This exists.
No, it does not. It's the proposed bicycle network. Some of it exists.
Bicycle network. It doesn't say proposed.
As Jim was saying, look at page thirty-six.
That corresponds with the
Which pages say propose, which pages
Have an existing bike network.
Six, your bicycle networks.
So no one's ever even proposing to put it on the post road is what we're saying according to this. That's on the old post road.
Correct.
Right. So we don't have that safety concern because we're not planning on putting it on the post road.
That doesn't mean that improvements on the post road aren't warranted to make it a safer environment for those who might choose to bike there, but it's not, wasn't identified as a dedicated bicycle network by the bike head people.
And the road
The traffic, the post road traffic circle study for one of the main emphases of that study was to help improve the safety of the pedestrian environment. That includes sidewalks and in some cases dedicated bicycle offices. That doesn't make it a dedicated bicycle network, but people are gonna be out there doing what they do, whether we call it a bicycle network or not.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um, in strategy B, uh, address critical road cases and intersections. Um, this included some language for placemaking along, um, Route One Post Road from Sasko Hill to North South Benson Road. Um, this was something that our consultants identified, um, just through walking uh, our downtown that there, there are, there is need to update the, update the pedestrian experience. There's a lot of hazard points, as you can see in the crash data as well. Um, and that is something that we haven't really studied as of yet. So that's, that's on the to-do list. Um, we also have in their, um, project implement, pursue project implementation funding, both for a post road and the Black Rock Turnpike safety studies. So those studies have been completed, um, and moving that forward to project implementation is the next step for those. Also, um, an additional study for traffic calming and urban streetscape improvements for, I have to rename this now, the Fairfield Black Rock Station um, and Ash Creek Boulevard. Um, we, so we may be also, um, looking for grant funding for that. Pursue funding for sidewalk connectivity. Um, we've heard um, that, you know, there, there are points where the sidewalk ends, doesn't connect. Um, so we need to look at, um, that as well. Um, and then we also included, um, there was a recent study done by the Connecticut Institute for Resiliency and Climate Adaptation, where they looked at our railway underpass, underpasses that flood frequently or have runoff issues. Um, and what also came up as part of that is that they are, they really do block both automotive travel. Some of them don't have pedestrian, safe pedestrian egress or, um, access for cyclists to get under there. So, um, that was something where we wanted to kind of take that to the next step in terms of some of the recommendations that they made. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just quick question, sorry. Um, the funding, um, that would come from grants or is that something the town will pay for or
Big trouble. Grants that we could apply for. But, you know, I think, I think even, even when we did that study, you know, there are I think one of the recommendations that they ended up coming, coming from that study was that it was probably challenging to apply for what you would think would be to mitigate the flooding part of it. Um, like a hazard mitigation grant would probably be very difficult to apply for, but something that reconnected, you know, like there are a lot of, um, grants right now through transportation dollars for reconnecting communities because they understand that the highway construction of the nineteen fifties divided communities in half. Not, not unlike what happens in Fairfield where, you know, it's kind of treacherous for pedestrians and cyclists to get underneath the highway, depending on how those, um, thoroughfares have been designed. Even when you get to the King's, the Black Rock Turnpike exit and that uh, roundabout that goes underneath the highway, that's even marked where it says, no pedestrian crossing. And there's no sidewalks, right? So there's, there, there might be transportation dollars that are available for that, whereas no uh, flood mitigation dollars. So it's really just kind of being able to show the co-benefits.
Thank you.
So
Bye, Commissioner Brown.
Half this is learning, so I appreciate the, the description and help.
Well, it says pursue funding for the study. We're talking about along the post road from Sasko and North South Benson. You mean from Sasko to North South Benson, that whole distance, right?
Yeah.
Okay. That whole stretch. And how does that tie in with the road diet that the, what is going on with the road, the D O T road diet project that has a project number? Is that gonna happen? Do we have any control over that? Cause they're reducing the lanes.
Yeah, there, there was a public meeting last week on that where the, the section of road from Renell Drive and Southport.
Renell, that's like on the other side of where the highway crosses over.
It's
Adjacent to Equinox.
It's right where Equinox is.
Yeah.
It's almost across the street from the northbound I ninety-five.
Okay.
Got that. Up to Beaumont Street. Beaumont Street is right at the area now where it's, it's, there's two lanes. What the, what that whole area is gonna be remilled and repaid. That's gonna happen. The question, they, they are suggesting because of that project, if there's an opportunity to, um, make some improvements that would help the um, flow of traffic and not, not in terms of volume of traffic, but to make it safer, slow people down a little bit. But at the same time, taking where there's four striped travel lanes, reducing it to three, three being one through lane in each direction and then a center lane for left hand opposing left hand turns. That reduces the overall pavement width so they can make the shoulders wider so that if there are bikers or walkers, it's, it's a safer, you move the cars further away from the curb to create more shoulder space and or if you're on the sidewalk, you, you, you've got a more buffer. Cause right now, as you go through there, there's a really straight stretch, long straight stretch of road from pretty much the I ninety-five overpass, Southport to River, River Lane or where the Rivas Office is. It's four lanes wide and it's dead straight and people are traveling at the unsafe speed. If you reduce that down by narrowing travel lanes and reducing the travel lanes, that will slow people down marginally. Make left, people won't get stuck behind somebody making a left hand turn where now it's two lanes. If you're in the left hand lane and someone in front of you is making a left hand turn, you're gonna want to maneuver around them and that creates conflict and crash points. So it's gonna reduce the number of vehicular conflicts and potential crashes by upwards of twenty-five percent.
That has nothing to do with volume. It does not change volume. In fact, it could make it worse because
You'll make it slightly, there are two, one location in South Pine Creek where the level of service slightly declines, but it doesn't reduce the overall volume of traffic. There's a certain threshold level of traffic that you need to make it suitable to do a road diet in the first place. Uh, and this meets that criteria. So they're suggesting it will make it a better environment for drivers. If you're making a left hand turn, again, you're not, you're not gonna get stuck behind somebody making left hand turns. It'd be dedicated left hand turn pockets or opposing left hand turn lane. That's all posted. Um, the feedback generally has been uh, not, not a hundred percent positive, but I think, um, majority support from those that have expressed an opinion thus far.
Makes the determination of whether that will be implemented. Is that the D O T?
D O T, it's a state road. They're looking for feedback from the town. They're repaving the road and, and they're either gonna restrip it the way it is or make some suggested improvements that would help um, the efficiency of flow.
And which, I'm sorry, which level of service intersection, which intersection has the level of service slightly going down?
It's South Benson Road westbound in the A M peak hour.
South Benson?
Sorry, South Pine Creek. That's, I misspoke. The South Pine Creek traffic intersection, because there's two through lanes there now, the proposal is one through lane and a dedicated left hand turn lane. It would go from a C to a D in the A M peak hour.
And which direction though?
Westbound.
Westbound. Those are probably a lot of people getting off the highway.
That's correct.
Right. This is coupled with, the state is also doing larger efficiency improvements along I ninety-five in strategic locations to help the flow of I ninety-five. So what, what the state wants to do is discourage people from hopping off ninety-five and is a bypass, using the post road as a bypass. And they're trying to make some efficiencies within the I ninety-five corridor, but at the same time, some of these local efficiencies will help the local traffic and may also discourage that cut through traffic. That it would be a disincentive for you to exit I ninety-five just to use that stretch of the post road and hop back on the, the next exit.
Because of the traffic, because you're, it's kind of there'll be fewer lanes.
They'll be traveling at a slightly lower speed. Won't be two lanes of through traffic and it will help the local condition while also discouraging cut through traffic.
That's, if you don't mind, that's Yeah, I know.
Sorry, that was a long response.
Don't worry.
Very thorough.
That will be part of we have to take a traffic study. Well, but, so that's my, that's one of the concerns about adding the ability to have a lot of density all the way to Mill River because that is where the so this traffic study would incorporate whatever those changes are. But, um, the D O T has total authority to make this decision within, from the town and the public as well.
There will.
Okay. Strategy C, um, address student parking. I, um, we just, we just added this here in terms of, you know, if there's a demand for off-campus parking. To be honest, I think what's kind of happened since folks have kind of changed their, uh, their commuting patterns. A lot of students are using the train parking lots now. They're, they actually opened it up. They don't have a waiting list anymore. Um, so they've opened up some of that, but that could change. I don't know. So we just added it in there based on some of the concerns that were expressed at some of the public meetings.
Um, I have a question about the others, traffic studies that we're talking about implementation of number two and three.
Those are completed studies where we would like to build those projects.
We talked last time, I believe, about inserting the, um, the maps. If you recall, the Black Rock Turnpike Traffic Study had a plan to
That would be great to insert because I don't remember what that said.
About, there was a roundabout at the five-legged intersection at myself and Callie, Coon's Corner, um, Black Rock and Tuxus Hill. And then potentially another roundabout at the entrance at Trader Joe's Gap Old Navy.
So there were two traffic studies on Black Rock Turnpike?
No, one traffic study on Black Rock Turnpike Corridor, one at the post road traffic circle.
That where McDonald's is. And, and what is that recommendation? And how does that, are they gonna keep that circle there? Or are they gonna make it a figure eight?
It's, it's, it's in, it's a work in progress, but the, the concept plan that came out of that was is, it's not, right now it's not really traffic circle. It's just a X. Crawdward lanes cross each other. They're making it more of a hybrid roundabout.
Okay. So when you say the post road traffic safety study, I think that should mention where it is, because that's not where we're talking about doing a new traffic study. And then the Black Rock Turnpike
You're supposed to say post road circle. Let me just add the
And the Black Rock Turnpike one is by Coon's Corner, which is, isn't that the corner of Jennings?
The Black Rock Turnpike Corner started at St. Morde and ended at, at the north and it's southerly terminus where Black Rock Turnpike splits from Tuxus Hill Road. where Black Rock Turnpike splits from Tuxus Hill Road.
Okay.
Which I call Coon's Corner.
Oh, right, right.
Because Coon's driving this stuff there.
And the implementation of that, um, should we put any thing in here or you're going to put maps in here?
Well, the idea was the bigger, the big, the big.
So it's, we have to coordinate with the DOT on those.
We don't know what that's going to look like yet. We know what it's going to look like, right? The projects.
They're, they're very cons, they're very conceptual recommendations. And then by the time you get to design phase and actual engineering, it's subject to change. So we have to be careful to say these are concept only type of things.
And does that affect anything else we're doing with development, concept or anything? Probably. Does that, it's not affecting commercial development?
Move on.
So the next, the next section is a community where people come together. We did, as discussed, we did add a section that speaks more specifically about school and educational facilities. We are going to be inserting a community facilities map that shows, you know, those, those places that are our community resources, parks and recreation libraries, community centers, school and educational facilities, our cultural and performing arts centers. And then we have, we have been asked by sustainable, the Sustainable Fairfield Task Force to add in some language about equitably located spaces. This may speak to, I think, some of those conversations about 20-minute neighborhoods that all folks should have access to like things, you know, parks and schools and playgrounds within a certain distance from where they live. So they asked us to insert that within there. And then when we get to the strategies, under strategy A, that's really to advance the recommendations of the Parks and Open Space Master Plan that was recently completed in 2021? Was it 2022? I think it was 2022.
Twenty-two or three.
And so this, these are the primary goals within that open space, Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
Where's, I don't see that on here, the master plan. Oh.
Strategy A.
Parks has a master plan and there is no open space plan. Those are two separate.
Yours is called the Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
It's got to be Parks and Rec, right?
Yes, it is, but it's for the current open spaces because, you know, like for example, Lake Mohegan is, it's kind of jointly managed between the Parks Department and also conservation. So that, that includes both of them. But there is also a different, when we get to.
In the next chapter.
Chapter, that's where we're talking about those.
Call it Parks and Open Space Master Plan?
Yes, they do.
But that's not the town-owned passive recreation open space. That's Parks and Rec land because they manage separate land than what conservation manages. I don't know who manages Mohegan, Lake Mohegan, but.
The, the shorefront that's swimming is, is managed by Parks and Rec.
Okay.
The open space piece is managed by the conservation.
But a separate, so the 1,100 acres we have of passive recreation, open space is purely conservation. So that is not part of this master plan.
Right.
Okay.
And then we also just made a slight revision to a section that item number seven within strategy A for a future study to determine its best site planning for recreation use. Strategy B, integrate placemaking and roadway projects. That has to do with taking the complete streets efforts to another level in terms of, you know, what we talked about in terms of, you know, if we do have a maximum front setback, expanding design guidelines for what those spaces could be in terms of the intersection between the public right of way and that setback area in terms of paras plazas, artwork, that type of thing. We also need to take, undertake placemaking plans for downtown and the Fairfield Black Rock train station area.
Something to strategy A, just commissioner, let's go to Commissioner Randolph Collins and then.
So, oh, sorry. Real quickly, of strategy B, one and two.
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing you. Sorry.
For strategy B, one and two. One of my ideas, suggestions is a consistent signage program for the town, neighborhoods, schools, public buildings. I don't know what there's, that's been considered or thought about.
And it is a study?
Yeah. I'm just, I'm asking if the, if the group thinks that's.
I don't know what you mean by just signage of what, the parks?
So, so signage, so right now we've got a different graphic style signage. When you come into town, when you see a school, when you, when you're on Stratfield, when you're in, you know, Greenfield Hill, there's no, the, every, every neighborhood and every building has a different style of sign.
Consistency.
Yeah.
What farm-based signs now too?
Something that's designed by something, somebody graduating from a school.
I got you.
Yeah.
I mean, it's. It's, I mean, especially if it's encouraged stuff and the, you know, that I'm fine with that. Thoughts?
Yeah, I think that's good. The, the other thing that was asked to be added to this, but we haven't added it because we came up with this draft was, I don't know if you'd heard, but the Arts Commission has been recently reformulated. And I think that they would like to add something in here about that as well.
Mark Farrenhard wants to have leaf finding signs downtown too.
So I think that could fit in with.
Leaf finding? So it says, you know, Town Hall this way, Library this way.
Yeah.
Parking.
Yeah, the arts, what, what are they thinking about for the arts?
Well, I think, I think it fits into that whole entire placemaking. How do they think about urban spaces? How can they integrate public art into those?
I'm sorry, the language would be something along the lines of including or considering including public art?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Find placemaking? That's not defined in here. I don't know what that means.
Let's, let me just go on because Commissioner Collins had it.
Yeah, I had a, you know, throughout the whole thing, I didn't see anything in regards to dog, pets, dog parks, nothing.
Dog parks are, are within the Parks and Open Space Master, spent a lot of time actually addressing areas where they can integrate those within the park scenarios that they did. I think they did 14 different park scenarios and they showed potential dog parks, dog park places within several of those spaces. So, but I can, I can add that as a dog parks. I can add that as a bullet point.
As you know, there's the restrictions, you know, after the, for the beach and things like that. There's a large community of socialization.
You do not want to venture into regulating dog parks.
But, but I.
No, I mean, it's a big social thing for both the people that own dogs.
I agree with you completely, but you do not want to venture into the realm of regulating.
You get big, a big support.
But, but I can, but I can add it because they did identify it within their, within their plan. So I can add the.
Actual dog parks and.
Yep, yep. Yeah. So if you go to those, if you, so it's on the Recreation Department website. If you go to that plan, they actually have drawn scenarios as well as part of the links. And so if you look at those park options, I, I want to say it was in like four or five different locations for potential dog parks. But I could just say.
Maybe.
I could just say, say explore further implementation of future dog parks.
Courtney, can you imagine?
It's a sticky wicket.
Well, listen, if it's already addressed in their master.
It's implied if you're, if you're, if we're talking about advancing their goals of their plan. And if it's in their plan, I don't think we need to pull that out separately.
The town has bounced around the dog park idea for many years and it has not gone anywhere.
But no, but they have dog parks, right?
Say again, you do not want to be in the business of regular.
Now, Westport, they do. Go to Westport.
We'll do it to recreation is what Jim is.
I.
It's a great park.
If they are, I mean, I would leave it as such.
The dog park thing.
It's like it's going nowhere.
Yes.
Yes.
Neither does conservation or whoever does, but.
That's good.
What they want to do on their park land is not our concern.
That is what I'm suggesting. Yes. That you stay neutral with respect to regulating dogs.
But the play, I'm.
I'm next.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just.
I didn't, I didn't know if she was done, so.
No, just a community where people gather. I see the study for Turner Reserve. It's great. But I see like, is there any consideration or has there been consideration for doing anything more for seniors? Like for Turner, for example, I know there'll be a study or there could be, like that could be an annex senior center. I'm just thinking, it's so far away from some people.
It came up in the, it came up in the, in the Recreation Master Plan.
Oh, yeah.
Because, you know, as you know, the senior center where it is right now is vulnerable to future flooding.
Yeah.
It's at very low elevation. And so it has kind of come up that where Turner Reserve is actually located is in, it's in a higher population area where the proximity could be more walkable. It could be closer to folks and that.
Or middle ground.
Or centrally located.
Centrally located. It's at higher elevation. And so that has been part of the conversation. I didn't specifically put it in here because I think that was, that's on the table as one of the options to relocate that, the senior center there and, but it, but I just, you know, it's, it's really not defined right now, but it is something that has been discussed.
I just want to go back. One step. Risk of scorn and ridicule. Just back to Kathy's point, strategy A, just to, to, to separate that from what we're going to be talking about in the next chapter. Rather than saying the Parks and Open Space Master Plan, it might be more clear to just call it the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to separate that from the recommendation we're making in the following chapter.
Okay. And I had a question. Um.
Go ahead.
What is a 20-minute thing? It's, I don't see it listed here, although. Something on page 42 that says in red, equitably located spaces, neighborhood proximity. What does that mean? Equitable opportunity? Does that mean equal opportunity to access parks and playgrounds? So what does that mean? If somebody lives somewhere and they can't walk to a park in 20 minutes, then what does that mean exactly?
That's exactly what sustainable.
Everyone in town has to be able to walk to a park.
They, well, they not, they want us to be able to understand whether or not there's equitable experiences available for people. They wanted it to, us to include it in our P O C D because they get points for it for their sustainable, sustainable Fairfield.
I noticed that was one of the inputs I was looking at. There was nothing in their input about environmental issues. It was only about equity and things. And also are we going to have hyperlinks in this to all these plans that we're referring to? They weren't in there yet.
I, I loathe doing that because they break. Well, because what if they change the website? Do they move it to a different part of their website? I really loathe hyperlinks within a permanent document.
But it's really hard to find those other documents. Anywhere. I mean, I don't know what, you know, there's a lot of plans being referred to in here. I'd almost rather have us repeat a summary of the plan or something so we know what it says, you know?
Well, this, this isn't intended to be a compendium of every plan that's out there.
But we're relying on so many other plans.
We refer to them.
Yeah.
But again, those are available on, you know, on the.
Somewhere.
Yeah.
On the new websites.
Well, and fun. Realistically, if we reference the Recreation Master Plan, any of those projects are coming from the Recreation Department. We are not the department that's going to initiate those improvement projects. But they, they will come before this board if necessary. And, you know, if they want to apply for grants for these, they can apply for grants for these. But I, again, we don't need to, we don't need to re-summarize everything within this plan.
Can you, we at least have proper nouns, like where we identify the actual name and title of the document so somebody could actually find it? Like what year is the amount, it's called the Parks and Fair, Town of Fairfield Parks and Rec Master Plan dated June of 2023 or something like.
Then they just, I mean, they just had what the, the full thing was, the Parks and Open Space Master Plan.
That's what it's called.
I'm not sure that that's.
Is that not what it's.
Master Plan.
I think it is Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Well, that, yeah, let's make it how it is. I thought it was said that it was, that was the title.
Yeah, it's, I think it's a good ask just to make sure that the citations.
We should be, we should, we'd be citing.
Yeah, I just Google it's Parks and Recreation.
And report.
I have another fine point from before that I, that I forgot to mention on, you don't have to go back to it, but it's on page 30. Oh, page numbers are not showing up. I don't know why. For some reason, some page numbers do not print.
I know.
Why is that?
Well, so let me, let me just say the reason why we didn't want to forward this to you is a Word document because it's like a highly embedded graphically rich Word document. And as I have edited things, I mess things up. So they're going to have to come back and repair some of the formatting because I don't know how they did all of the formatting. So they will make sure that they do all of that. Let's just talk about the content now.
Okay, so number seven on that page 30, which I hand wrote on here, when we're talking about Board of Ed, I don't think, when we are. It's page 30. It's like the blue page, sustainability.
We go back.
What page, Kathy?
I forgot to mention this before.
Okay.
Number seven at the bottom, education. I think we have to coordinate with more than just the education facilities planning committee. It should also be the actual Board of Ed. Because I, I recall talking to someone in PTA, PTA, teacher.
Go ahead.
Association. They pointed a few things out where the Board of Ed was unaware of something that was being recommended. Something, they were concerned about enrollment. So I think if we're going to coordinate, it should be with the Board of Ed, not just the Board of Ed Facilities Planning Committee.
Facilities Planning Subcommittee is a subset of the Board of Ed.
But we should be coordinated with the, the actual overseeing committee.
The Board of Ed. Members of the Board of Education Planning Committee are members of the Board of Ed. That's who we liaise with.
That was the complaint I got.
Well, again, I don't think we need to try to, if.
They have regular meetings too.
Say this delicately, but if they've got a subcommittee of their own members, it's not communicating to their general membership. That's not something we could fix in our P O C D.
But it's not just about facilities. It's about enrollment. That was the issue that cropped up when we were talking about this a few months ago. They were worried about enrollment and so that's a higher level than facilities committee. That would be.
Well, that's, that's what the facilities committee, again, that's, that's the sole province of the Board of Education to, to, to work that out. What we're suggesting here is this, this statement is more of a recognition that you are recognizing that some of the strategies we're promoting may have an impact there. It needs to be coordinated. That's, that's.
Should be part of it. That is the entity, not the, there's a no dozen subcommittees probably.
They, the Board of Ed direct us to this committee, liaise on with them?
When they ask us, this is the committee that we liaise with when they ask us, hey, what's on your future radar? If you look at that enrollment, last 10-year enrollment study has a list of projected potential housing developments. That's who we provide, I've, I've sent it to the superintendent's office who they determine. How that gets communicated internally shouldn't be dictated by this plan. That's, that's up to the, how the Board of Ed manages itself.
Facility Subcommittee should articulate it to the larger Board of Ed.
I presume that's happening.
I think that happened last time because we saw different things in the minutes of the Board of Ed versus the Facilities Committee about enrollment.
It's not on us though. That's.
But that's, that's nothing that you want to address in this.
Address the actual board and let them deal with which subcommittees we should be dealing with, like.
Are they the ones telling us to go to the subcommittee?
No. We are periodically invited to appear. I've been before their facility subcommittee several times. That's their administrative staff and a subset of the.
Education. Well, why don't we just, I mean, I would just say either we guys is or ask if that's what they want us to do. I don't, it's Board of Ed or Board of Ed Facilities Committee. I mean, it's, it's the same thing. That's, but that's who we've generally been liaising with.
Yes.
I mean, that's what we've been doing it then, unless we get a petition from them to say just Board of Ed, I would just think in my opinion, I would.
Yeah, it's, it's a statement. In fact, that you all are recognizing that there's potential impact. One of the criticisms we got was, hey, you guys are wanting this, that and the other thing. This has a downstream impact. Well, potentially, we, we, we know that. We're stating that here. That that needs to be considered.
Cause yeah, enrollment is not really mentioned in this and that's what we're talking about now, right? The, the, the impact on enrollment or the potential or the non-impact.
That's all baked into their facilities planning, yes.
And we don't have an, the other complaint I got from somebody on PTAC was we do not have a section on education. We do, we reference buildings and that's about it. We don't really, that's just not in education. That's under like where people come together or something.
Correct. And that's how it's been, that's not unique to this plan. That's, that's, it's pretty much.
We had a section in the 2016 plan. It's, you didn't say.
Pretty much the same. The same.
We had a section called education, but you're saying it didn't have any more detail in it than what we have here.
Correct. It's a it's was just an inventory of facilities.
Okay. That was the comment I got.
I understand that dynamic, and we talked about that last time is is you all are keenly aware of the pressures that are out there and what you hear from your constituents and. What? The impact of a certain development may have down the road on enrollment. It's it's more complicated than that. It's not a linear relationship.
Development.
Tried to articulate last time is by providing those. Asked information. It's not. It's not. It's not A then B. It's there's a lot going on. And and the message that I've tried to convey. Is that? What's to come in terms of new housing units? Just backing up a minute. Overall, what's to come in new development is going to pale in comparison in terms of impact as to. The turnover of existing housing stock. That the ten year. Enrollment forecast spells it out that in in the next ten years between, you know, close to eight thousand housing units are going to change hands. Even if we don't build a single new unit in this town, in the next ten years, roughly eight thousand homes are going to flip.
Single family homes. For the most part.
The comings and goings of who's selling and who's buying is what drives change in enrollment. Far more than incremental change in the number of dwelling units that are produced.
You know, I probably mentioned that, but I just don't remember it. You're see, because when we did, because you have mentioned. We only add maybe ninety three new housing units a year of any type. Whether it's an apartment, a condo, or well, we don't. House, right? In a given year, that's sort of an average. With all the density expansion, that could go up.
But it's not.
Two hundred or something.
But again, if you could stop, you could turn the tap off and say, we're not going to build another new unit in this town. And it's not going to change the dynamic of enrollment, comings and goings with. Turning over of existing housing stock.
I don't think I gathered that the last time you spoke, that eight thousand houses will change hands in the next ten years.
Years. It's about between seven hundred and fifty and eight thousand, eight hundred housing units change hands every year.
So you're saying that as all the baby boomers eventually die off because they're not selling. Their houses will be bought by families probably, and that could change the dynamic of the school system more than building new houses.
Yes.
That's what you're saying.
Exactly.
And that could be one thing that happened.
That's nothing new. That's not a new phenomenon. That's a phenomenon that's been taking place. Nearly eighty percent of our housing stock was built before nineteen seventy five. So this is not a new.
Generational demographic.
Right. Well, that's what I tried to show last time.
I grasped that the last time you mentioned it.
It ebbs and flows. If you looked at that that fifty year snapshot, we had, you know, two consecutive. Ten year periods of actual population decline and the corresponding enrollment decline, then two ten year periods of. Modest increase, but not to the level of prior decline. And now we're in a back into a modest decline. The the enrollment projections are for modest decline over the next ten years, rebounding back. In twenty thirty three to about where we are today. And that's taking into consideration. Shopping list of potential housing developments that we have shared with them that they are considering and are enumerated in their enrollment study.
Well, I I appreciate you repeating it because that that's something that needs a lot of clarity.
I understand the the. The sensitivity to a, you know, development A is proposed, and that is going to lead to. X number of school kids. And and I understand that that's a kind of a natural connection people have, but. It's the unseen transactions that by far more. Drive the bus, pardon the pun.
Microcosm.
On who's moving in and who's moving out.
Or has any of work kids and then five kids.
Presented that very well at the Board of Ed.
I you could sell us to say you had one child at your house. You decide to move, then you get a family with five kids. That's going to impact the school system. But that's what you're saying. There are there are unidentified cases of this happen already.
There are there are there are.
Actually identified.
It happens. And if you look at all the factors that they consider in an enrollment projection. Sales transactions and where those are happening is a large part of that analysis that they undertake.
It's underscore when we get an application and people.
It just makes it super sensitive when you have a a a discreet application. And people are saying, hey, this is a school district X. It's going to bring five more kids. We don't have room for those five more kids. But you know, that's that's the tension that that builds in there. What I'm suggesting is.
Trademark one, which has a hundred and one units, but has only six school kids. Whereas you get a a street with a new five lot subdivision, every single one of those houses might likely have children. Right. So, you know, it's it's.
Then it's still so.
Yeah.
I understand the tension that's baked in to the to the.
This is what I hear the most of from everybody. The the most things I hear are from parents that they're behind the eight ball. They whoever made the decision state. They have to fix it, and it can't be fixed. The thing about the enrollment.
The racial imbalance thing is a lot more complicated, which we tried to articulate. Last time. It's 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 not. It's because there's competing public interests, right? The 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 public interest is to build more density where we've made the infrastructure investment. All right, that's going to have a disparate. This proportional impact on 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 density. But at the same token, if the public policy is to to expand diversity and housing choice. You're penalized for doing so by getting reaching a threshold minority population that triggers racial imbalance. So it's a paradoxical problem. I agree. It's 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 on the one hand. You know. We're somewhat victims of our own success. We're being successful in creating. Housing densities and different housing types that give rise to. Increased minority populations, which should be viewed as a positive thing. But yet the racial imbalance calculus penalizes us for that.
You should run off. Go ahead.
So um, I I think your explanation has been clear, thoughtful, well researched. Um, as Commissioner Brown was saying. This racial, the the while a small percentage of people in town have kids at school. But it's a it's a.
Yes.
What percentage is it?
About two thirds of households do not have any school.
Two thirds of households do not.
What?
So sixty eight percent of all Fairfield households are one and two person households without children.
Children.
Without school age children.
But 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 the most vocal people are those with children. And so we we all, all of us in this room get feedback from that group. And I think your your research um on the impact of multifamily, on the impact of, I'll call the baby boom echo. Um, is really thorough, and you've got, I I think, a a a very. Good grasp of this issue. It might be beneficial to see if you can. Uh, document some of that in this P O C D because it is a question we all get all the time. You guys, we get it. Um, so if if you could.
Yeah, I I I agree. I think in the.
Index.
In the last, well, no, actually, we can we can put it in there because that chart that I gave you. Last week.
Yeah, that was a good chart.
No, not that, the the other one, the the.
Like a bar chart?
The seventy year that. Oh, no, that. Pretty much in the existing plan. So we can pop that.
I don't know. In your ratios, the ratios of of what new apartment buildings generate from the school kids. I think that would be really helpful because we have people.
Well, we have that. I mean, that's articulated in the T O D. That was a big part of the T O D plan because pushback. Has traditionally been anytime you have a discussion about density is density means more kids. And I don't want to be anti. The idea is. You have a broader focus. Than does the Board of Ed, right? Your your charge from the statute is to have all kinds of. To promote. Development near infrastructure, to promote ranges of housing types for all races and incomes. And what flows and and what the Board of Ed has to do is their charge is to create the best educational product for the kids that are in the system. It's so they're not mutually exclusive. And I love where I was going to go with that, but but.
Is 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 that.
This is a more broader. But 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 your role is to, hey, this is this is what we might expect to come. And then the next steps are, how do we accommodate that?
But but my suggestion is, I I think your grasp of these. Issues is complete or as complete as could possibly be. I just want to make sure that Fred is working here because while. Maybe one third of the people in this town have school age children's children, the people who read this. They're the they're going to be the ones who focus on this document, and they're probably the primary audience for this document because they think about the future of the town. So. Let's make sure we address their concerns because you've done the work. You know, you've got the, I think you've got very a very good grasp of the answers of the issues. And I just want to make sure that our audience, while it's it's a small percentage of people that have school age kids. They're the ones who are going to focus on this document because they're engaged and they're younger and they look look towards the future of the town.
Yeah, I would just add me. I don't know if we can get like the number of kids for apartment building because that's going to fluctuate. One year it could be ten, other year it could be three. Track that every single year.
We've been tracking.
This will be a static thing for ten years, so.
It is, but but for the.
Yes.
Ten or so years we've been doing that, there's been very little fluctuation in the. Yeah, I would just caution one thing. I mean, one thing we don't want to get involved with too much is. I don't I don't want to put too much enrollment data in here, though, I would think, just because. I don't want to get pulled into.
Correct.
Even identifying. What I think is, like I said, very thorough, complete research, you may be getting pulled into what the Board of Ed has been saying is. Um, well, you guys are the ones really driving this, and I don't want that because I don't think it's true. I know it's accurate. Um, and I think by even just putting in the data. To us, I mean, we I think it should be referenced and mentioned maybe, but not to extent that we actually get pulled into that whole.
There's maybe a recognition of it.
I I think the one data point that's really that that comes up frequently is the impact of these multifamily buildings on. On generation of school children. Uh, and to demystify that, you know, as you're as you've explained, it's the churn of the existing houses where people like. My wife myself move out and we've got four bedrooms and somebody.
We have that. We have that T O D.
If you read their ten year enrollment projection, it's. They agree. No, I'm saying it is. Yes, but that that keep. This is the third rail issue. We can't. We can't get too much to mention it, but I think your analysis of. Multi family, these new multifamily buildings are coming on and the relatively small impact it has on increasing. Schools in the disparate in the in the the how much it contributes to the grand list. Um, is emphasizing because that is a that is planning.
No, I think.
It is. I think that's it is articulated in this plan where it does that number.
You can highlight that. You can highlight it, specify it in here maybe. I wouldn't go much more like. I don't want to. It was great. This chart was great. I love this chart. I wouldn't put it in the P O C D, I don't think.
Yeah, no, I I wouldn't either. And my and and I'm not looking to create. We don't want to create tension.
Yeah.
You you've got two different roles here. You've got.
I think that's the key, yeah.
And 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 um, it's not unique to Fairfield. Other, you know, Westport's undergoing redistricting. Stratford's undergoing redistricting. It's not an uncommon phenomenon to have to do that every ten to fifteen years.
I would see if we get through. I was gonna say, can we see if we get through one more section? I mean, is it about like the enrollment stuff or is it back to the?
Are we going to? Are you going to? I don't know if it's in here. I don't I also thought. I think having the number of new units built. Every year is a very good statistics, as well as the number of houses that turn over. Those are very interesting statistics. Somewhere in the data section of this P O C D.
Does summarize in the housing section, how many units have been produced? We've added that whole production.
Insolary to that. I don't remember if we talked about this in the T O D. I'm sorry, in the. Expanded whatever we're talking about with the. Commercial districts or the downtown district. Does that follow the same affordable housing? Um. Percentage that we're using in metro center? I don't remember seeing.
Right now, it's a ten percent requirement, and only in the T O D areas did it get bumped up to twelve.
Where's the other? Is there a downtown T O D area?
There is a downtown T O D that applied to um. Did they do twelve percent of it? They did ten. Where did? Why did we revise that to twelve down there, though? That was a proposal?
It was, uh, just.
Feel like that was discussed.
I'm sorry.
Is the T O G the same as the downtown?
No.
District?
No.
Okay.
The downtown district is within the designed residence district. And that was done for Anchorage.
Okay, I see on page twenty five. There's a map of the downtown T O D district.
It's not a T O D district. That's a.
An area. We don't really. So basically, the whole town is at ten percent except for metro center area, which is twelve percent.
Yes.
Right, but in the.
But I thought we were raising something to fifteen percent.
There's a strategy that talks about increasing that to um twelve to fifteen percent.
Which part?
Page twenty one.
Okay.
Strategy C, six, adjust minimum inclusionary zone required to twelve percent or more.
Wait, page twenty one? I see twelve six. So that's everywhere in town, twelve percent. And.
Just for that's not all over town. It's ten percent over town. Metro is.
Ten percent now. The recommendation is to consider increasing that ten percent to twelve percent or.
And would we increase the T O D areas to fifteen percent?
No, I'm sorry, that's.
I thought we were discussing that at one point in housing.
I think that's only under the T O D.
You're right. It's twenty. It's it's twelve percent or more in the T O D.
All right, now.
I I think this is, I think this is. I think this is probably going to be something that comes forward from our Affordable Housing Committee that is studying it more specifically. So I would say that. We're we're just because we don't include it within the P O C D doesn't mean that we can't entertain. A zoning regulation revision for the rest of the future. But I think our Affordable Housing Committee, as you know, they're very diligent. And they are looking at a lot of different things to further affordable housing within in Fairfield. And so I think this will be one of the things that they look at, but I don't think we need to get in the weeds in terms of revising anything else. Related to that because they will come forward with their own strategies and proposals.
Keep in mind, again, this is just trying to get consensus on the recommendations we're going to public comment. So I'm I'm sorry, I got a little disjointed because we're at page forty three and then we started kind of jumping around.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just.
I think you got her going back to the education items and.
I understand it's a difficult issue. It's an an area of concern and important community without a doubt. To. Give you a little bit broader perspective, though, because people tend to look at things. Or not.
I mean, the Board of Ed bunch, it is sixty percent of our town, but.
As well it should be. I'm not suggesting it should be.
There you go.
Obviously, a the quality that uh.
And it's what draws.
That people receive in this town is is what drives a lot of interest in relocating to this town and drives property values. So it's absolutely a key. Component, and I wouldn't suggest for a second otherwise.
Okay, let's start on an. Let's go.
Thank you.
I have um. I have a problem with this because um. I feel like this is called the Plan of Conservation and Development. I think the whole conservation section should be upfront. Along with the priority that statute puts on it. Also, I would like to. Hear from more input. Some of. It's really hard to find the input from a lot of these departments. Because they're not all in one place. They're kind of like in emails and scans and this and that. So we we have a whole bunch of things that came in from twenty seventeen. I don't know if they were all updated. I don't think conservation was one. I don't and harbor management, all we got was a little. Email saying this is not, this is just sort of not our whole opinion. I've talked to somebody at Harbor Management, and they're they're going to give us input. So they don't have it yet. And um. For example, it was mentioned that we don't have a there's a shoreline um. After plan on the shoreline, which was in the current P O C D, which is from twenty sixteen. And that's not mentioned in here. So there. Can we get some input from some of these other agencies? And can we have a face to face with them? Can we invite them to a remote meeting so we can ask? Q and A because a lot of them have interrelated responsibilities. And that relates a lot to everything we're doing with development. Like, we're talking about. Twenty minutes to get to an open space area or somewhere.
So historically, one of the things that we've done is that we. So historically, one of the things that we've done is that we have met with. Not the current Conservation Director, although we've had continuing conversations with them. But we met with the prior Conservation Director to talk about. The prior P O C D, some of the things that they wanted continued in the in the proposed P O C D. And then we've also done presentations before the um. Before the Conservation Commission before and talked about some of the priorities and goals. We included some of those when we did our public workshops that we did. Rependemic in terms of integrating, for example, greenways, which were really not part of the prior P O C D. And also pollinator pathways, which are part of what was discussed in some of those open meet open um. Those public workshops and well as well as with uh the Conservation Department and uh the presentation. To the Conservation Commission at that time. Um, so those were priority items. In addition, in conversation with. The current Conservation Director, one of the things that he had asked us to include within the P O C D is the fact that the open space. Um, for example, the acquisition plan and the open space plan are both fairly old and they'd like to both update. They'd like to update both of those documents. So we've included language within the plan to prioritize funding to update both of those plans.
We don't have an open space plan as far as I'm as far as I know. I do not believe we have an open space plan, aside from that.
The thing was that they had like a really, really old one is what and so anyway, so he wants to do one of those?
What could could we just? Why don't we walk through the chapter and see what it has and then we can circle back to any unresolved matters?
Yes, please. So on page. Forty five. Um, yeah, we gotta go through what's changed from last. We expanded upon the discussion of the existing 1100 acres of of open space to also include that there's also 400 acres. Parks and 1730 acres of privately held open space uh that plus that total. Thirty 200 acres, which is roughly 17% of Fairfield's land area. We've added a section uh to talk about the achievements of sustainable. Pass force in their silver status and some things that uh that is. Be included. We've introduced a uh paragraph about the. Responsibility in the Harbor Manage Commission, Harbor Management Commission. We have now included, which was a shortcoming of the previous draft. Because there are some pages that talk about. We have a responsibility as a shoreline community under statute to reference relevant coastal manage and act consistency. Analysis, which are in these pages, but what we didn't have is the map that defined the coastal boundary to which those policies. Apply. It's it's a little small. We need to enlarge that a little bit and it was hard to read the way we have it. We just kind of have it here as a placeholder because that was right. That was pointed out to us by you uh that we should have a corresponding map that references the area to which those policies flow. Again, another page 50. This is a. Public works. Clarification where we talk here about there was some work done about some downtown green infrastructure. Uh, but the bigger picture that is pointed out is that that's going to help at some of the smaller. But. To handle some of those larger rainfall events, the sudden high intensity rainfall that's becoming more frequent. There needs to be a bigger investment. Overall drainage system uh upwards of potentially $20, so to identify that again as a potential. Priority for for future funding. So the changes that were made on page 52. Were to include this uh an update of an open space acquisition plan in concert with the Conservation Department's Commission. Mission Commission, I think that would be a standalone separate. Joint effort, separate from some of this plan. And uh. Again, talking about um. 20 minute neighborhoods with some question about what that meant, so that we had some additional language to kind of articulate what's really meant by a 20 minute neighborhood. And then to follow up on the. Investment for downtown flooding, we've added a. Priority prioritize funding for that. Potential capacity improvement that we've made reference to on page 50.
We're still we're going to be getting some comments from conservation. We can.
Yeah, we've um.
Analyze when we get them and see what they are.
Yeah.
Harvard Management, I mean, they've given us something, but are we expecting others' comments from them or?
I don't know, but again, the idea is not necessarily to incorporate every. That we talked about before and references some other plans is not to have every single plan incorporated into here. But if there is a future plan or work that those bodies want to pursue. We can include it in a in a strategy recommendation, so it gets, again, gives them. Priorities. So again, the idea isn't to. How all that planning work done and incorporated into here is to identify what additional work may need to. Is 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 going to be forthcoming uh in in next steps.
Well, we have very specific things about changing zones and things like that, but we don't have much specific about how we're going to preserve open space, for example. How are we going to have some space? Expanding density in the whole eastern side of town. Where are we going to find the open space? I wanted to preserve a little piece on that 81 Black Rock Turnpike that scrubbed in it. They have to obviously remediate it, but nobody wanted to do that. It's going to be no open space there. That would be a good place to have a little piece of. Open space with natural earth, you know, but it's just not going to happen. I don't see it ever happening anywhere. On the east side of town. We're we're putting tons of density and there's no priority here.
Is that that would be, well, I I. Again, that's part of. Articulating a broader plan for doing so, which we are trying to identify as a priority in strategy B, item two. Um, there have been, I went back and looked, there have been some incremental things we mean. It's not on a on a grand scale when you're comparing it to uh 1100 acres of existing, but maybe we can comment on a recent acquisition. On the east side of town, there was a Villa Avenue piece that was kind of purchased, not so much. It's going to have kind of a co benefit. It's more. It was it was um. Acquired more for it was identified as a potential. Flood with the river.
Detention basin.
Detention basin opportunity, but that acts as an open space. It was a three lot subdivision that was then later sold to the. The diocese property, the old the old diocese property on Villa Avenue, so. We are a very mature community. I don't think you're going to see large. Chunks, but there are areas and you can articulate this probably better than I can at this point, but um. Some greenway opportunities, but again, we recognize that is a plan that needs to happen. But it's 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 envisioned to be a standalone plan as a joint effort with others rather than as a separate.
But I think if you go to the next chapter, I think that answers some of your questions and concerns about. The east side of town and in particular, the Rooster River. Um, you know, there there are some strategies that we've developed to help divert some of the. Impacts running along the Rooster River, but one of the things that will be unavoidable in the years to come is the need to acquire properties. Because frankly, our development patterns of the 1950s just built too close to that river and rivers aren't static. They change, they flow, you know, they ebb back and forth. Um, and we have residential properties too close in that area. I think when you look at some of the goals that we have for strategic um. Multimodal pathways, pollinator pathways, greenways, acquiring properties along the Rooster River makes sense. To expanding our open space opportunities and neighborhoods close to where there's higher density. Um, but that's not going to be a tomorrow solution. That's something that we identify in the plan. And then piece by piece by piece, as we, as the Conservation um Commission, the Conservation Department works on their open space plan. We've identified it here as a flood solution as well. Hopefully, we can start to target and acquire some of those properties. To build up kind of the same kind of greenway and open space, kind of breathing space for that river like we have along the Mill River in the Rooster River corridor. So I think that's a possible for that.
I also think that we should consider. Green space preservation is one of the variables we think about when we talk about any development. We talk about parking, this and that. Traffic which would be, we maybe we need to add to our 10%. You know, from we we require 10% open space for a subdivision. Do we require it for anything else? I I don't think we do for any other type of development. I don't think we have a an open space provision for any type of preservation of open space. For any other type of development, just subdivisions, right? Five or more.
And I guess the question is, what's the value of that? Open space relative than if you could create a corridor? I mean, I I will tell you that the whole green space conversation came out of. A conversation with Aspenuck where Aspenuck is really focusing on this with some of the properties that they've acquired. Um, in Westport, in parts of Fairfield, and you know what they're really finding is biodiversity thrives when you can create connected properties. That, you know, having these little incremental, like just saying we're going to meet a 10% and it's a space that. Doesn't have connectivity to something else, maybe doesn't have the highest kind of habitat or ecological values. So. Um, one of the things that the prior conservative kind of pointed to in terms of why I like the Aspenuck. Process and why they had kind of come up with areas where they were targeting is because they looked at. They had a value system associated with it. And so I would say that maybe that's not our purview to define what that value system is, but to rely on. Our Conservation Commission and our Conservation Director to determine.
Question of Corcel is next, but go ahead.
Question two.
I think. Going back to your um 81 Black Rock Turnpike example, the thing to keep in mind, too, and maybe we can reference it here. Uh, more specifically, it's that whole. I'm going to call it Metro Center, even called they've changed the name of the train station. That that development set aside a pretty big chunk of of open space and that whole development.
It was Disney-esque. It was and it was probably going to be on top of.
He's I think he's talking about.
I'm talking about the original.
Metro Center?
Walking path. There's a there's a boardwalk. There's about. I don't want to. It's a substantial acreage. It was set aside as that overall.
I remember that. It was a conservation. It was a wetlands permit condition, nine acres.
That's it.
Nine acres.
Right, so that's a piece, call it what you will, because you said that overall development. Spun off a piece of now publicly accessible open space. Maybe we can reference that as a recent.
I think we should focus. We should reference it. I was looking at the Westport P O C D and they have like. Twenty pages for the natural resources all spelled out and a lot more detail than we. It just seems like it's a higher priority. In the Westport P O C D and all we do is refer to other people's plans, but I mean, there's a Mill River Greenway, right? We don't have anything in the plan about how we have to restore the X side property to its. To to what the wetlands permit required. I mean, it looks terrible and the developer that was in there, they weren't going to do it. Nobody remembers it. It it should be part of a greenway with with uh natural shoreline. It should not be a bulkhead right there, you know?
Well, that's a different conversation.
But we can mention the natural resources and how important it is to um. You know, to preserve them and protect them and expand them, all our rivers, you know?
Okay, but going back. To my point I was making before, the 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 Disney-esque or whatever you want to call it, uh that you. I guess you disagreed with. Again, the idea there was that 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 was maybe it's not traditional open space, but it's publicly accessible amenity space. Or access to connectivity to actual open space. So part of that is is a walking. Available to to traverse from where those apartments are around the property. Into some programmable space and also into that 10 acres that that was set aside as that overall development. So maybe we can reference that as a recent.
I was just there. There were cormorants. It was pretty.
And I'll go to Tom next. I'm sorry, but even in strategy B, you're suggesting just adding a third recommendation. And maintain enhance existing open space assets and green spaces and have a third one that says in. Uh, preserve and enhance where we can. Um, I don't know what you said, green spaces. You're just looking for a general recommendation like that?
Yeah, we should also have. A recommendation. I don't know if this is in the sustainability plan, but. Town owned land. You know, town hall, whatever. They should be talking about reducing their lawns and increasing native plantings. They're not doing it, but they we should be doing it and all our town on land. And um, I don't know if it's referenced in the sustainability plan or not, but it it should. It should be done. It should be mentioned in here as as a goal to inform people and educate them.
Good, Tom, and then Alexis.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, Tom.
So uh two two main things on on the recommendation section for this um with regards to uh trees and. Impervious surfaces. If it's if it's possible, I don't know what what goes into identifying and tracking this. I think it would be. Useful for the town to track our canopy coverage and our impervious surfaces as, I don't know, a percentage of of the town's land. With a goal toward uh increasing canopy coverage and reducing impervious surfaces. I think these I think the recommendation on prioritizing tree tree plantings looks like it's in the wrong strategy. Um, it just seems a little out of place there, but I would put a little more teeth to that prioritizing tree plantings. I I would prefer to see something like. Uh, develop a and a plan for increasing tree plantings rather than just prioritizing. And then just to to wrap this up on on my end, um with regards to impervious surfaces. If we could identify um the. The uh area of impervious surfaces, including uh both pavement and rooftops. Um, I would I would love to see some additional strategies for reducing those, and that could be a combination of green roofs, white roofs. Um. White roofs doesn't address the imperviousness, but it does help with the heat island effect. And then uh, you know, other measures that can help us. Either if not, if not reduce uh impervious surfaces in all areas, at least make better use of it, whether putting solar panels on on. Large paved areas, other things like that.
If you guys does that.
Commissioner Harrison?
Um. I I do think that the could be bumped up a bit stronger, uh and I'm happy to provide feedback. Um. I would just I just want to ask if to take prioritize tree plantings to enhance tree canopy and create cooler urban streets. Um, can we, I guess, get a little specific there? Like, are there certain pockets of town that need more tree plantings? Like, is there a way to maybe evaluate that? Like, that's just this just seems kind of vague. Um, I know that we can't get terribly specific here, but I'd like to see just more. I don't know, it's just needs to be bumped up. Are you talking about in the urban in the? Yeah, number four, sorry, protected. But but like you're talking about street trees, right? I don't know. It says prioritize tree plantings. Well, we only really have. Yeah, so I mean, so I mean, we have our. So so keep in mind that um where this is concerned. This is just a nice policy, but then how do you implement? And so if there are things that we need to do within our zoning regulations to implement some of. What you suggest, like going above and beyond, like, for example, our shade tree requirement within our parking lots, is that adequate? Um, we do have within our permit requirements for commercial developments or special permits that street trees are required. So. You know, I guess we would need to look at that and say, you know, is do we need to do more within our regulatory structure? To promote the policy that we're recommending within the P O C D. And then could we all then just going back to when we were talking about micro, what was that micro? Micro. Mobility, maybe I think another area that we want to focus on in the sustainable area is encourage less automobile usage, perhaps. And encourage other alternative ways of transportation like bike, gay, walking. These two. Traverse around town, public transportation. Does it need to be in this section or should it be in the other section? I think it's applicable to both. I mean, when we had, I mean, there was just a report from Pete the other day talking about auto emissions. I was I was just thinking.
I mean, certainly in one.
I think I mean, I think they could just, I think it could be applicable. That's me speaking. I don't know if other people agree and maybe you don't.
I mean, there's always overlap, I guess, no doubt. Um, but Commissioner Randolph and let's.
Wait, I just had one more point. I just had a third. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Finish up.
I can send. Encourage, you know, some new development to have solar panels, to have micro gathering, things like that. I I don't I don't know that too many. I I don't, I don't know that too many.
The Greenwich P O C D, I think, has that.
I don't know if too many towns would have done that within the zoning.
State state incentives.
I think that they have, yeah, I think they do have state incentives. And I think that I think they start with kind of public buildings first. I I I haven't heard too many. Yeah, I mean, I guess we would have to.
We have, I mean, we there was a pretty broad program, a lot of the town schools.
Yeah.
Especially where there's flat roof.
Yeah.
Most of the residential buildings we're seeing now are built, are going back and putting in solar panels, anchorage, put in a bunch of solar panels. So it's, it's happening through state incentives and and tax rebates and stuff. I I don't, I haven't seen an example where you give some sort of bonus or something for that. I mean, it's applicable when you've got a flat roof, it's easier to do. If it's a more traditional roof, then it becomes more visible. And and I know the town has, has been a leader regionally in in residential installations, because there was a grant program, there was, I think they, they they used the wrong terminology, but had specific vendors brought in to.
Feel like Trinity Solar, they do.
Like the favorite nation status, they they kind of had all the paperwork and they, you know, went through it. Uh, that's probably not the right way to say it.
Randolph.
This is a late hour, I'll be brief, but um, so Commissioner Crisulo suggested his couple of suggestions, I agree with wholeheartedly. Tracking informable surfaces, tracking horse canopy, I think those would be good long-term methods to 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 capture. Commissioner Braun raised some, I think, good problems that we need to solve that are, that we need to frame what is within our remit. So we we control the built environment primarily. And if we increase the requirements as as was suggested for foliage coverage. So right now, and I mentioned this to I mentioned this earlier, that the, I I believe that our standards for greenery on both commercial and residential are less than some other communities. So if we were to study that and perhaps have more stringent landscaping requirements for both residential and commercial. You mentioned parking lots. I see the the illicit parking lot that has no trees in it and wonder how that happened, but I guess it was grandfathered in. But if we could have some some more restrictive requirements for for planting of trees for both commercial and residential, I think that would accomplish what Commissioner Braun was suggesting. Then also, in the event where we, there is no opportunity to put trees in, perhaps create a set aside a fund that gets paid into where there is no opportunity to put trees and then we, that could fund more street trees, for example. And then I think our street tree program, I'm not sure. I think it's a, it's probably an opt-in, that's an opt-in program, is that correct?
Well, not.
Well, there there is, there's a requirement for street trees within some new development projects. But if you're an existing homeowner and want to have a tree, there's a, yeah, there's a program by which the town will do that and there's some shared. But we can't pick a street and say, this is a priority street for for basically putting street trees in.
That's what I was saying, Jeff, is like, can we evaluate how, what, what, what are the needed areas of town?
Is that our remit right now?
We can.
Well, that can be a, that could be a.
With the tree warden, just to ask, I mean, I don't know. I I, to be honest, I don't know what his annual budget is, like, I don't know.
We we we, we've got access to money by, if if there's a a new development, we can put some type of some type of fee on something for greenery and that could get put into a a budget. There's, there's, there's mechanism.
It's just to go before the R T M, right?
Yeah, it's it's, we, well, we can't do impact fees, but but I understand what you're saying. You want to have a strategy to enhance stronger development landscaping requirements in in. I I I have that from your, from your prior.
Yeah.
And then, and then I think. Be the place to to make that recommendation.
Thanks.
Leave it there?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
We're going to probably talk about scheduling another one next. Another one of these, I think, right?
I think finalize, we need to kind of, so.
finalize going through it.
We have a lot to digest.
Yeah.
Yeah, then circle back on some of the other, I think, housing that's left open.
Listen, we really appreciate your good conversation, but we'll see in a couple.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks all, good night.
Bye.
Thanks for joining us remotely.